I don't have no.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. This is a Greenbelt City Council meeting. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Good evening. Ms. Pompey?
Here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. Pompey?
Here.
Ms. Pope?
Here.
Ms. Nissel?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
I'm here. If you would, please join us in a moment of silent reflection as we think about several residents and others who've passed away since the last council meeting. These would include Joyce Magnum, Barbara Smith, Rachel Mertz, Wanda Opasnik, Pamela A. Brown, Mamie Ellis, Juanita Wilmer, and former resident George Bill Marshall. Please join us. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you very much. So we begin the agenda of each council meeting with a section called petitions and requests. And this is a time when any resident or anyone that is here can make a statement or make a request to the city administration. If you are here in the room, if you simply raise your hand once recognized, you can walk over to the podium there. And we do need your name and address, more or less, in Greenbelt for the minutes. If you are online on Zoom, you can use the Q and A tab to submit a question or you can raise your virtual hand and we'll promote you. And if you are watching at home or somewhere else on Facebook or YouTube or on cable TV, you can simply send us an email to questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So please limit your remarks to time, three to five minutes, five minutes tops. And also, please, if you could be civil in your remarks, we all are neighbors here. We all live together here in the city. So please say what you have to say and we will do the same. So at this time, are there any petitions or requests? C2, Mr. Snyder.
Bob Snyder, Hillside Road. A couple of weeks ago, I watched the work session you had on several topics, and one was the Reparations Commission update. And several people spoke who were on that commission. I was surprised that there were only five, I think, there at the meeting, maybe six, five at the table, maybe somebody was sitting back here. But later on in the meeting, Dr. Rosado gave a report, as you know. And I was sort of appalled, but wasn't really surprised when she conveyed that only five, I think she said four or five, or five or six of the people are doing all the work. And then later she proposed that the city hire a full-time or part-time person to do some of these tasks. And she mentioned the research and projects, as did another member, that they were working on. And there was three committees formed, or subcommittees. And I just thought, that didn't seem right. That there's a commission of 21 members and they were all so anxious to be on this commission. And this is the largest committee or commission I think we've ever had, although I'm not real certain about that. And this is a volunteer city. I mean, we've always prided ourselves on that. So I just am urging the council to not seriously consider her proposal. This was chartered, you know, to my understanding, this was formed as a volunteer commission. The volunteers should step up and do the work. Period. You know, they should be encouraged to get involved, not just say, I want to be on the commission and go to a few meetings to say that they're on the commission, which I think is, from what I've heard, has happened. And so anyway, I just, you know, think that's important, that we not, you know, take up that proposal that she suggested. This is a commission that's very large, has lots of people that apparently were enthused about doing the work. So they should step up and do the work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Orleans?
He called on you, Mr. Orleans.
I'm sorry, I must not have been paying attention. Good evening, Mr. Orleans, Greenbelt resident. I was handed something tonight, which I've not had a chance to look at yet, but I think it bears on some of what I've been saying for, in some instances, almost two years now. I'll forego going into any detail about what I've been saying for almost two years now, except to say with regard to at least one point, and that's the most recent point, and that being council meeting in closed session discussing personnel matters and voting in closed session to allocate money from Greenbelt's treasury to provide a bonus for the then interim city manager. I don't think it would have been in what I was handed tonight, but again, I haven't had a chance to see it yet because I don't think such a statute exists. I don't think there's a law that exists allowing council to do what it did. And it certainly violates any norm that I'm aware of as it relates to Greenbelt local government and any local government. If council or any other legislature is appropriating money for a purpose, that should be done in open session, giving residents an opportunity to comment on whether or not such allocation should be made. So I don't think I received an answer to that question yet. But I will sit down later today and tomorrow review what I was given tonight. And I'm still expecting something to be provided by city management. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hartman?
Michael Hartman, DuCorke Gardenway. I would like to extend my thanks and the thanks of the Greenbelt Emerald City Pride for the participation by city manager and members of his staff, as well as the city council members who were joining us. But I especially want to thank the park service, the park rangers, who set up a lot of the stuff at Roosevelt Center. There was a whole crew of them. It was like five or six of them, I think. And they did a wonderful job in bringing an extra table or two and chairs. And they were really wonderful in helping set up Roosevelt Center. And so I want to thank Mr. Salmaran and his staff for really helping make the parade and the festival a real success. And I thank also Chief Bowers, who was there, and the police department, who were joining us in the processional. So I just want to extend the thanks to all of you for your support. And just, thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any petitions or online questions, emails?
I don't see any hands raised online, and I haven't seen any emails come in.
Okay, okay. Well, so we don't respond to petitions and requests. We research them. They're logged by the city clerk. Staff follows up. And that's the way almost all cities do petitions and requests all across the country. Hey, so if there are no additional petitions or requests, I'd like to kind of move to the consent agenda. Are there any modifications to the consent agenda? And if there are none, could I please have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
The spoke is seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that will actually bring us to the agenda and additions. Now, I do want to note that there were some attachments to the packet that came today. So if you are here in the room, you are certainly welcome to go over to the table and pick up a copy of the agenda as presented. But if there are no modifications to the agenda, could I please have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Adopt the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
The spoke is seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So we're going to move to the communications section of the agenda, and I have a presentation. And that is a presentation, a proclamation for National Pollinator Week. So Kevin Carpenter Driscoll, our environmental coordinator, will you please come up? National Pollinators Week is taking place June 17th, today, through the 25th. Kevin, welcome. I'll go ahead and read this. Proclamation, whereas pollinators, such as thousands of species of bees, are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinators provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy diverse ecosystems in towns and cities, and whereas pollinators play a vital role for the trees and plants of our community, enhancing the quality of life and creating recreational and economic development opportunities, and whereas the city of Greenbelt manages parks, public landscapes, and other public lands that may include greenways and wildlife habitats, and whereas the city of Greenbelt provides recommendations to developers, builders, also residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and the maintenance of their habitats. So now, therefore, I, Emmett V. Jordan, mayor of the city of Greenbelt, do hereby proclaim the week of June 17th through 25th, 2024, as our municipality's observance of National Pollinator Week. And as Greenbelt is an affiliate of Bee City USA, we do hereby urge all residents to recognize this observance. Kevin, I'd like to present this to you. Thank you. Hey, Kevin. You've been doing a great deal of work over at Buddy Attic Lake recently. Well, not recently, over the past few months, last year, really, to try and enhance some of the areas of that park near the playground so that it's more conducive to pollinators. And really, throughout the city, this is an initiative that we're very sensitive to. So can you talk a little bit about some of the improvements that you've been working on? And more generally, about what folks can do to enhance and encourage pollinators to come and light in their yards or developments?
Yeah, so we've been working hard in certain habitat areas to reduce the amount of invasive plant species that we have, promote more of the native species that these pollinators rely on to thrive. So at Buddy Attic, at Trougham Hills, and I have dedicated volunteers that are also part of the Pollinator Circle as part of our Bee City affiliation that have designated work areas near their houses that they've been working to improve on city property. So they've been working hard there. And we've been trying to really help educate the public about the importance of our native species and importance. And not just when people think about, you know, pollination, they think a lot about honeybees. They're very, you know, iconic is the word for it. But the native bees are the ones that really need our help. So we try to help people understand the plights that they're facing and how they can help. So this week, there's a lot of stuff going on in the region. There's a lot of other Bee City USA affiliates, Hyattsville, College Park. All are going to be having events going on. DC is going to be having events going on. If you go to pollinator.org, you can find listings of events on there, as well as with the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, a lot of the other environmental groups are going to have things happening. Our local, one of our local native plant nurseries, Chesapeake Natives, is going to be doing a few things as well. They're going to be having a pop-up at the Maryland Meadworks and be selling some of the native plants there. And this weekend, we will be out, the Pollinator Circle will be out with information about our native pollinators and some plants to give away as well.
Yeah, that's a lot of activities. If you care about pollinators, you could be really, really busy this week. Oh, sorry, sorry.
How long have you had that on? How long has that gone on?
Hey, and not to go too far off track, I saw some fireflies this week. And I was wondering, are fireflies pollinators?
Some of them are. Some of them do a bit of pollination. They're not like your heavy hitters, like a bumblebee that have those furry bodies that really agitate the flowers and carry a lot of pollen around. But some of the species do go around and pollinate. But they are very important to the ecosystem and they are really beautiful. I think last night, I went out with my five-year-old and just watched the show in our backyard and it was beautiful. So really time to enjoy it. It's the next month, month and a half or so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to head over to the Firefly Sanctuary sometime in the next week or two. It's exciting just seeing them out. It's summer.
Yeah.
Summer in Greenbelt. Hey, thanks for all you do. Any other comments or thoughts? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's going to take us to administrative reports. Mr. Salmaron, there's just a ton of things going on. Thank you for all you do.
We do a lot of buzzing around in this city. We've had a very busy week. We've had a great pride event, great turnout. So thank you, thank you, Mike, for the recognition. We had a very successful job fair. We have 60 individuals attend the job fair at Beltway Plaza. So thank you, council members, for attending. We are kicking off, we've been in full July 4th preparation. So we anticipate a great, a great event for July 4th. We've got a couple of things to put on your radar. The, we have MML next week. We've got a meeting scheduled with Secretary of Community and Housing Development. So I'll send out some emails when that will take place. That's a city meeting and we have to be mindful of Open Meetings Act, so. But I wanted to let you know that meeting's going on. I expect a lot of good things to come out of it. Today was summer camp kickoff, so. Went off very good, so great turnout.
Yes, they were all over.
A lot of activity for the next five weeks, so we're really excited. Moving on to some more sobering news is the fire DMS. We've been dealing with this situation since the announcement of the county removing all career firefighters from Greenbelt Station. That's a total of 24 personnel. As you are aware, last week, we've council or work session meeting so that some of us could attend the meeting that took place Wednesday at the Greenbelt Fire Station with all the volunteer firefighter companies of the county. We heard directly from the deputy fire chief, McCollum, made some commitments that we had requested earlier in the week. Last Tuesday, we had a leadership meeting with, between Greenbelt and county administration that included county administrator and the fire department, and we asked for a few things. Among the things that we asked for were for AEDs that we could install in our police cruisers and public facilities in addition to the two ambulants. At minimum, we requested two ambulants, one for Greenbelt and one for Berwyn Heights, so that we could have medical services 24 hours. Like we do now, they made a commitment to provide us with one paramedic advanced life support ambulance, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And as we previously reported, we're looking at ramping up staffing by volunteer and other resources to provide greater coverage at both stations, Greenbelt Fire Station and Berwyn Heights. So we're still working on those issues. And we're, it's a top priority for us to do the best that we can, the most that we can, to ensure the safety and wellbeing of our residents.
Yeah, you know, this whole conversation is just so sudden, so out of the blue. So it's good that we're working really closely with Berwyn Heights and other municipalities to try and come up with solutions. But I mean, take the Fourth of July celebrations. It's not just Greenbelt. People from all over, all over the county, even outside of the county, come and join us for that event. Are we going to have enough firefighters to actually support us? We usually, you know, the career firefighters are usually there with us.
Right, we usually have firefighters there. It's a challenge. We're going to ask our firefighters to participate and the county career staff to participate. I hope to get some commitments this week and next week for the Fourth of July preparations. One of the things we decided not to do is brass marketing or Fourth of July event. It's already big as it is, so we're trying to contain the promotion and marketing of the event. So if you don't see us out on the Green County list of events going on for Fourth of July, you know some of the reason behind it.
You know, Kinnellworth Avenue usually comes to a stop, whether there's publicity or not. So we, we need the county, we need their involvement, engagement, and their partnership. And, you know, the way to maintain a partnership is no surprises. That's just me. Any other comments about?
I think just keep in mind, because I think that College Park is not going to have the fireworks again this year. So I think we need to maybe prepare a little bit extra for that because we'll probably have a bigger, larger crowd. That was the last I heard, so.
Thank you for letting me know.
Although they didn't last year either, so.
Yeah, they didn't last year either, but so we had, we had a lot more. We had a lot more people.
At June 27th, at 7:00 PM, there is a sort of an open house meet and greet. So if you are, if you are interested in helping your community and, you know, serving as a firefighter, and there's, there are a lot of benefits for the volunteers. There are a lot of reasons beyond just protecting your neighbors to be involved. If you are curious and want to find out more, come over to the firehouse. I believe it's 125 Crescent Road at 7 o'clock on the 27th. And there'll be refreshments and Chief Ray and the crew from Engine Company 35 will be there to answer questions and talk about what it means to be a firefighter. It means something. It's a big deal.
Probably a good opportunity for some teenagers or, you know, high school, young teenagers to stop by, maybe to see if that might be something they're interested in later. Because the fire department's looking for all kinds of volunteers, so. Be a good opportunity to check out the fire department.
Yes, if you're interested in medicine or something like that, or the training that you would get as an EMS or just lifesaving techniques would be of great benefit, so.
We are promoting the event through our social media channels. So as soon as they announced it last week, we started promoting that.
Hey, I have a question. I was at the farmer's market last week, not this week, and I noticed there was a fellow waiting behind a parked car here outside of the municipal building. It was an electric car. And there was a car that was illegally parked there at the EV charging station. So I talked to this fellow and he said he'd been waiting about 40 minutes. And so I called the police non-emergency number to find out if they could write a citation. So I was told that we don't have a specific statute or a fine that's associated with, I guess it'd be illegal parking. But I was wondering if we can research adding something to the general orders that would specify a fine or something for, you know, blocking illegally parking in an EV charger space.
I think the best mechanism to put in place a citation or enforcement mechanism would be through our ordinances or parking ordinances. So it would be a council activity. We can propose a ordinance for site, the vehicle. That vehicle that you referenced was cited, but not for a EV parking violation, but for a two-hour parking violation. We have since rescinded that violation because we believe we need greater clarity on the, on those two parking spaces. There's only one parking space that's reserved for EV and it could use better signage. So we rescinded the citation. We're going to upgrade the citing, the signs for that one parking space. Then the other three parking spaces are two-hour parking only.
Yeah, I'd be interested in putting forth an ordinance. I think that we should do that. Yeah, let's improve the signage, but I mean, there's a sign right there and there's a giant charging, charging station box there. So it's, you know, the idea that, oh, I didn't really see that is far-fetched.
As an EV vehicle owner, it's pretty clear to me. But for others, it can be confusing what's the, what parking spots are allowed, so.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Weaver.
Well, and I guess one question is, is there already a two-hour limit on that? Even for EV vehicles at the EV charger, are all of those spots subject to the two-hour limit? Because I know the max you can do at that charger at a time is one hour. Because then it, then it cycles off and you'd have to go back to it and start it up again. Does the two-hour limit apply to all of them, all of the, all four of the spots there?
The two hours should apply. But because that one post only references the EV charging station, I think it's not clear enough whether the two hours apply to that spot. So I think if you pull in, as long as you're charging, folks would think that they could park there however long it takes to charge. Now, if you're sitting at that charging station for more than an hour, that's a level-three charger, so.
It won't, it'll, it shuts off after an hour. Like even if your car isn't charged, it shuts off after an hour. I know this from experience because I, you know, it was almost charged, but it didn't quite get all the way charged because I probably needed like 65 minutes to charge the car.
Oh, so you're running on empty.
No, 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 I wasn't that low. It was just, it didn't get all the way back up to full charge.
Then the two hours should apply to this parking spot as well, right?
The, the level-three charging stations, because they're meant to be more for in-transit folks, you want those to be no more than an hour because you want a high turnover of level-three chargers. The destination chargers, which are those level-twos, those are the ones that you should accommodate folks being at a location for two hours or more. But at level-three, you want a high turnover. So yes, two hours should apply to them.
Okay, any other questions? Let's go ahead and move on to the next section of the agenda, which is under legislation. And this would be item number 11, an ordinance to make a supplemental appropriation in the Greenbelt West Fund for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, in the amount of $50,000 for additional Greenbelt West Fund expenditures over the appropriated amount. Of course, we make appropriations in the budget and council is free to make additional appropriations if need be. But, you know, occasionally, there are questions about how council appropriates money and we do it through the budget. And if there's funding available on that line item, we use it. If additional funding is required, we make it the appropriation in an open meeting. So this is an item for first reading. In order to have amenities for summer programs, staff recommends city council introduce for first reading an ordinance to appropriate $50,000 from the Greenbelt West Infrastructure Fund to the Greenbelt West Infrastructure Fund. $50,000 was agreed upon, the amount that was agreed upon for a fee in lieu of, a fee in lieu between the city of Greenbelt and the developer of the Motiva property. of a fee in lieu between the City of Greenbelt and the developer of the Motiva property. So that $50,000 is earmarked for facility and programmatic improvements at the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. And it says here in the comments that Greg Varda, our recreation director, is present. Is Greg online?
I don't see him online unless he's one of the phone numbers only.
He's not online, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, well, you know, we wanted Mr. Varda, but we'll settle for you. Mr. Samron, what can you tell us about the specific utilization of this $50,000 that came from Motiva?
Sure, first, I would like to apologize for a mistake we made in the comments. This is for FY '25 fiscal year. That's why it's a first reading, so you'll have your second reading in the, in the new fiscal year, and it'll take effect in the new fiscal year. The, as you know, we've paid special attention to Spring Hill Lake and doing some floor work, replacing the doors, painting the facility. We have a room that was previously a computer lab that needs a bit of love. We need some furniture, new furnishings, a couple other equipment upgrades for the office. So as we were looking for funding to pay for those things, Greg asked the question, and he asked, well, what happened to this money that Motiva gave us? So we did some research, found it, and sure enough, Motiva had given us funds to make improvements to the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center, so we've been sitting on this, on this money for some time, and no time like the present to make that transfer over to, from the Green Belt West Fund to our budget, so that we can utilize those funding. So it's gonna pay for primarily furniture, furniture and improvements for the spaces that we haven't been able to accommodate at Spring Hill Lake.
Sounds good. Hey, I know there was some talk about making some modifications to the front desk area. Would this also be going to kind of support that effort?
No, not directly. It will make improvements to the office that Frank and Brian use in the space. The redesigning the entry and that welcoming area is gonna require around $150,000 and more, so this isn't gonna get us there. So we're planning on making those improvements, so we're probably looking at a 2026 improvement. If we're able to accommodate that request in 2025 through savings or other funds that we can reallocate, we'll, we'll try to expedite that.
Okay. Hey, this is an ordinance for a first reading, and I'm just, we usually don't discuss exactly when an ordinance is introduced for first reading, so I appreciate the explanation. Would a council member like to introduce this?
I can turn.
I know, we just need to change it from 2024 to 2025.
Yes, comments, correct.
Oh, is it correct in the?
The ordinance is correct.
I have the ordinance up, so that's right. I'd like to introduce for first reading, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Greenbelt, Maryland, to make a supplemental appropriation in the Green Belt West Infrastructure Fund in the amount of $50,000 for amenities at Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center located at 6101 Sherwood Lane, Greenbelt, Maryland.
Second, we don't second first readings, we don't second first readings.
So that will come up perhaps in July or in August. You know, I was just looking at the calendar, we, July, so we only have one meeting in July and the next one. So that agenda in July will probably be jam-packed with the good stuff.
Yes.
I'd like Greg to remember that, about the $50,000.
Yeah.
Paul.
And Greg wanted to be here this meeting, but because it's a first reading, it typically just gets read into the record, and we don't discuss it into the second reading.
Okay. Hey, let's go ahead and move to the next section of the agenda, other business, and item number 12 is authorizing the city manager to execute the Human Resources Information System contract. In American Rescue Plan Act funding, there is an allocation of $85,000 for an automated human resource system implementation. A human resource information system, HRIS, is software designed to help organizations meet core HR needs and improve the productivity of both managers and employees. A human resource information system helps businesses and governments create innovative workforce strategies and deploy them effectively. The current human resource system consists of Excel spreadsheets and lacks the integration efficiency needed to manage our growing workforce effectively. After thorough research and evaluation with multiple potential vendors, Paycor Human Resources Information System has been identified as the optimal solution, the most desirable solution, to address our operational needs in human resources. Staff proposes that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Paycor HRIS. This system will provide a comprehensive suite of HR management tools, including payroll, benefits administration, time and attendance tracking, and employee self-service functionalities. So it's recommended that city council authorize the city manager to execute this contract with Paycor in the amount of $72,000, and this will enable us to modernize our HR functions and improve overall efficiency and employee satisfaction. Mr. Dwayne Martinez, who is the Director of our Human Resources, is here in the room. Mr. Martinez, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yeah, it's nice to have you here with us, and it says Paycor representatives are also present. Is anyone online from Paycor?
Yes, I believe Mr. Ramesh is online from Paycor.
Mr. Ramesh, welcome. How are you?
I'm doing very well. Thank you for having me.
Oh, it's a pleasure. It's a pleasure to see you, and it's a pleasure to discuss this Human Resource Information System. It's sounds like, well, it's something that I know we've been making constant and steady progress towards upgrading our human resource systems. So, Mr. Martinez, can you talk about the process that you went through in coming up with potential vendors?
Yes, definitely. So in September 2023, the city partnered with our broker NFP, which is Non-Farm Payrolls, and placed an ad in a reason for proposal on eMarketplace for a potential vendor for our HRIS system. Again, as we mentioned before, our Human Resources System is a software designed to help organizations and government entities meet core HR needs and improve productivity of both the managers and employees. This was a process where we evaluated our current state, so our current state was that we had no HRIS system in place, a human resource information system, and the process for tracking employee data was very manual, using Excel spreadsheets. And some of the reports, and I'm gonna just give you a few examples, were like staffing headcounts, employee demographics, pay rate changes, job history, the onboarding experience, and finally, annual evaluation process as well, very manual. So with this process, we, as we placed out the reason for proposal, we sent it out to, and I'm gonna give you the exact number, over 40 vendors, including vendors that were in the Green Belt entity as well. Out of the 40 vendors, we received five responses, which only four vendors actually submitted an actual bid for the, for the implementation. And that was submitted in October 2023, when the bid went out, and also we received those final bids at the end of the month, so 30-day process. The different vendors were NeoGov, Paylocity, ADP, and also Paycor was a final vendor. We had two sessions. The first session was a meeting with the senior team, and we also had a checklist for vendor submissions. So when we met with the senior team and the city manager, we evaluated a few different questions. Some of them were, some of them were around, does this system help with compliance within the city? Also, does the HRIS system empower employees? For example, it has a section there for not only annual evaluation, but employee succession, with also adding value to how can I promote within the city, or what can I do to make my job more beneficial towards the city? Also, we wanted to know, is it easy to integrate with payroll? For example, we have a new payroll system called Admin, so we want it to be seamlessly where we put employee data into the Paycor system, and also that is, that system able to talk to Admins and also our benefits automated system as well, without having to use multiple systems. So that was another factor as well. And then also, can we have predictive analytics to assist with decision-making within the city as well? So based upon like, for example, I know with finance, we have like predictive to foresee what can we do to put in place for different processes and procedures, and we also wanted that for, as part of the HR department as well. So based upon those different checklists, we selected three top vendors. Our three top vendors were NeoGov, ADP, and then also Paycor. So as far as to narrow it down to one final vendor, we had a session two, which allowed the vendors to actually do a proposal and a presentation to the team. And then from there, we gave them a rating based upon like their presentation, and also the quality, and also the needs of what the city needs from that vendor, as far as integration. Out of the three, Paycor was the top vendor, basically giving us everything we need, also with integration, also with reliability, and also with their history, how they work with different organizations, and I'll let Mr. Ramesh talk to that as well. And then also with their history, they've been in the business for over 33-plus years.
Well, thank you very much. It sounds like you went through a very, very thorough process. Mr. Ramesh, quick question. So this is a, it's a subscription, or we own the software outright?
Yeah, great question. It is a setup as a per-employee-per-month. The system itself is software as a service. So you'll have the ability to modify, create custom workflows. The system itself is very easy to use and very scalable. So when you're looking at implementing something along these lines, you need to have your IT team in place, you need to have your HR department in place, and you need to have the financing available for it. And I'm happy to report that all three of those boxes have been checked.
Very good, very good. Mr. Ramesh, I see that you are on Montgomery Road in Cincinnati, Ohio. Are you in Kenwood or St. Bernard or Norwood? Where are you in Cincinnati?
I am actually located here in Kensington, Maryland. I am the local Paycor rep here for the DC metropolitan area, along with members of my team. But I am located in Maryland, born in Pennsylvania, and I've been here for, came down when I was three years old, and I've been here for quite some time now.
Very good, very good. Council, I know you probably have some questions, or this presentation has been very thorough, so there may not be a lot of questions. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I had a question, because I was a little confused, because it talks about the contract being for $72,000, but there's some different numbers in that quote, none of which are actually $72,000. So there's the one that is, it looked like there was the 31 that was the implementation fees, which was, but that's not quite half. And then there's also the one that's the annualized total, so I guess I'm a little bit confused about where that $72,000 comes from.
Sure, great question. So what we do is, we don't actually start charging the city until we go live for fiscal year '24-'25, which is running from July through next June. The only fees that will be, that will be applicable will be the implementation fee, which will be spread across the first four months, and then the first six months of the methods in terms of what I was referencing before, which is a monthly basis. And that will give us the overall total approximately of $72,000 based upon the employee counts that I've discussed with your HR team.
So that, so that $72,000 is the implementation fee plus six months?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But that still doesn't make sense.
Ms. Neesal, go ahead.
I just, I think I would like to see a piece of paper that says these amounts, because I'm hearing now that 72 is going to be half of 120 plus 30, and it's also not that.
Sure, I'm happy to provide additional documentation. I did speak with Dwayne and his team, as well as Bertha, Bertha Gaiman, in terms of providing her with the numbers. I knew that we were operating within a specific budget for this specific fiscal year, and for me, I was doing everything that I could to make sure that I was gonna fall within the parameters of that. We operate again on a per-employee-per-month basis, so there is a specific cost, and you're only billed on the actual numbers of employees that are active within the system. So as the, I guess the sine wave of employee counts rise during the summer and then fall, when the summer, summer help has actually gone back to school and the pools are closed, that's when the per-employee-per-month basis would be lowered. I'm happy, again, as I said, I'm happy to provide additional documentation.
Yeah, it is confusing, just but looking at page three, the section that says City of Greenbelt, Maryland, Implementation, the total amount is $31,000, and you've said it's for six months, the first six months, but it's annualized, that would add up to 72.
So the 31,000. Quick question, a quick interruption here, sorry about that. The 31,000 is an implementation fee, that's only one time.
Okay.
So we're going to utilize that aspect, basically, as we're developing and writing the custom software for the specifics needs of the city.
So it's the 31,000.
Connect with Admins, we're gonna connect with Employee Navigator, we're gonna build out the HRIS system, and that is the implementation fee, so that's one time. That's not on an annual basis, right? Right.
31,000, then the monthly fee based on the number of employees? And together, those would come up to 72,000?
That's correct.
Yeah, please.
I super appreciate that you have done so well and worked so hard to put this within the budget that we have this year. However, next year, are we looking then at spending $120,000 over the course of a year for the, to keep the same services?
No, the, the next year, based upon the way that the model works, we do have a specific promotion that's tied to the first six months and then the next six months. So the first 12 months are operating at a reduced cost, and then the final six months of fiscal year 2022 will resume the regular rate. The fiscal, for fiscal year 2025 to 2026, the approximate total cost will be 102,000.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. McKinney.
So how different is this new system from what you currently have? So I'm also just trying to understand what the sort of change management plan will be, so is there something like built into the tool that walks people through different screens, how to do different functions within it, so when they get in, they're actually knowing how to use it? Or is there some sort of plan for, for training them on it?
Yes, so it will be training as well, but it is a self-service system that has an app. So for example, an employee is able to check like one login, I'll be able to check my benefits, I'll be able to check my deductions, change my tax forms, without actually going into and waiting for a HR person, or I'm able to self-service myself. In addition, it'll change our performance evaluations, because right now they are, just check a number, it's not really evaluating our, our pillars or anything that are our goals. So it will connect that as well, then also with talent management. So right now, we pay like a high fee just to place ads on Indeed for our open positions. With the Paycor, we just submit a job, and it'll go to 100 job boards. In addition, it entails a benchmarking for our positions, so right now, recently, I just did a compensation study, which was worth almost 100,000. This is built into the system, so you won't ever have to pay that fee, because it'll keep up with those job positions as well. So that is another caveat that I liked about that as well, versus five years from now. Now I'm coming back in front of council asking, hey, we need to do another comp study, because the times have evolved.
Ms. Pogba?
No, I think it's fine. I think it's a great upgrade, and you've done a lot of research, and you explained it very well. Thank you, I appreciate that. So I would at this time recommend that we authorize city manager to execute the contract with Paycor HRIS in the amount of $72,000.
Just a second. Okay, Councilmember McKinney has seconded. Mr. Martinez, just a quick question. So in terms of the range, the cost range of the bids, is Paycor the lowest bid, or, these are very specialized services, so.
Right, so given the quote Paycor is right in the median between the four, NeoGov came out the lowest, but they offered the lowest, I would say, efforts with integrating systems, and they didn't provide what we needed from a functionality standpoint. So we would have just had a system that would have been just there with that organization, so.
Okay, and we really have a relatively small human resource function here in the City of Greenbelt with very few employees, so is this something that all of the employees, I guess it's three or four?
We have three employees with authorization for a fourth that we have.
So will everyone be using this system, or is it more of a management system?
No, it's everyone, everyone, yes.
Everyone in the organization. There's different components for different layers of, layers of employees. So all the employees would have access to be able to see their benefits, their pay stubs, a few other self-service things. The, there's a talent management and performance management component that would, that's tailored for managers, supervisors. The, there's a talent management and performance management component that would, that does tailor for managers, supervisors and directors. To manage their teams, set performance goals, uh, do performance evaluations through the system.
Okay, and I know one challenge that the city has, has been facing is just trying to catch up with all of our archival documents. Of employees that have been with us historically. Is this system will be helpful in capturing some of that information as well?
Yeah, yes, it will.
The system will replace laser fish function for the HR documents. So from a change management perspective, it's a new workflow for, uh, recording those documents. Now, some of those documents are going to go away entirely because there isn't a paper form to fill out. It would be done on the HRIS system.
Okay, and that information would be kept in a database which we, is ours, even though we're paying the monthly fees. If we decide to change vendors five or ten years from now, we, the information is still ours?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, uh, Ms. Mc, um, Ms. Weaver.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm still a little bit, because it looks like the, so the, the, what we were asking for tonight, tonight. The, the, the contract will only go through, will it be four months of setup plus six months? So a total of ten months or the full fiscal year or what's?
Sure, great question. It is for the full fiscal year.
Okay. But then it looks like, because I guess it's, it just, I think, I agree with, I, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Niesel that these numbers are just confusing. Because then you have this monthly subtotal amount of almost ten thousand dollars as a monthly fee. But that doesn't sound like what, so when does that kick in? So this is the first fiscal year, but then, I mean, are we, are we at some point going to be paying ten thousand dollars a month? For this system based on this breakdown of the monthly services for three hundred employees? Okay.
Yeah, great, great question. So, uh, coupled with the twelve-month promotion that we have going right now. As we are entering our own end of fiscal year here in June. Uh, the, the per employee per month model only kicks in, in full. In actually the second half of fiscal year three from now. If that makes any sense. Uh, I, I know that sounds a little convoluted, but it'll be January twenty-twenty-six. When that actually, uh, kicks in in full to, to that full ninety-eight. Um, I believe it's ninety-eight-twenty. Now I will say this, in, in year three. We, there are no long-term contracts here with Paycor. So you're not locked into, uh, utilizing our, our services, um, after that point. We are a month-to-month agreement, um, and again, it's based upon the actual numbers that are provided by you all. By active users in the system. So in essence, the ninety-eight, the, the, the ten thousand dollar estimate is, is really just that. It's a, it's an estimate based upon the numbers that I've discussed with Dwayne and Bertha.
Right, and the three hundred is based upon our full head count. Cause normally during the summer, we ramp up really high for like the summer camp. So we wanted to integrate that, so it wouldn't be like a shock. So we wanted to make sure we had an accurate number as far as like, hey, around summertime, we have five different camps and this is how many staff we're going to hire. So we base it upon that number.
So what we'll do then is when we're ready to do the fiscal twenty-six budget, we'll have to, we'll have to fit that in. And it won't be necessarily the full, huh, at that point, it may be some portion of that. But maybe not that, that full, but well, I may have a better sense of, I guess, exactly how much it would be at that point.
It'll be a hundred, around a hundred and two thousand.
Okay, that, that would be for fiscal twenty-six, but then we might, then for fiscal twenty-seven, then we might be looking at.
A one to one.
One-twenty.
Correct.
Okay, uh, I think I've got it. I do have it. So we, we're, the, the, the motion that's on the floor is to authorize seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, the amount for next year would actually appear in the budget and we would consider it at that point. As we consider all aspects of the budget. But for right now, for tonight, we're just looking at the seventy-two thousand dollars. And a good chunk of that, thirty-one thousand dollars is for the initial implementation. Ms. McKinney?
Um, just a, sorry, a couple of follow-up questions. Um, what is the plan date for, or when will you do a cutover? From your old system to your new system and how are you communicating that? So that people know, okay, I'm, I'm paying this, I'm going in to do my payroll this time in this system. And now I'm going to do it over here. How will that work and how will you communicate that out? And then, once you get past the implementation plan, how does, does that seventy-two or the one-twenty? Include ongoing like technical support, since that you are a very small shop? Who will you be going to and how does that fit into the overall cost?
Yes, so, um, to answer the first question, we, we're looking at a January first, um, live date. Um, there, there will be communications to all staff prior to, um, it will be seamless because we don't currently have a HR system. So they can't go in any system and do payroll. Um, admins will still stay the same, but Paycor will just integrate with, um, admins. So basically whatever we put in admin, they'll talk to each other and the systems will work that way. Um, as far as, um, the, um, support, I'll let Ramesh, um, talk to it. But I, from my understanding, they do have twenty-four hour support from, they do have a HR person on staff and other, um, technical support. If we had any additional questions in, as far as like, um, systemal technicalities and things like that.
Yes, Dwayne, uh, thank you. That, that, that's absolutely correct. We do have, uh, built-in twenty-four hour support for, uh, business critical, um, issues that may come up. We offer a multi-channel, uh, uh, um, omni-channel support systems. You can reach out via phone, you can reach out via chat, um, you can create an online case. We also do have an HR support center for any specific questions and you can talk to a SHRM certified professional as well. That is all inclusive, uh, with the, uh, contract pricing as presented.
Okay, thank you very much. And just one, uh, final question for Mr. Martinez as far as, uh, uh, gathering up and scanning or implementing. Uh, inputting the information from old HR records, is that something that's going to be done manually? Or is there some, uh, way of scan, rapidly scanning that information?
So that is a part of the implementation plan, the cost, taking everything, so, so it'll be seamless on our part. It'll be Paycor doing that work for us.
That's something we've been struggling with for a long time. So how, how long would it take to actually, will you be, will that be done before January first?
Yes.
Oh, very good. That's, uh, that's good.
I think it's an interesting system because I can do it at work too. I can make all these changes. So I think it, it's, it's very convenient. It is very convenient.
Yeah, please, sir, hold on.
Sorry.
But you did have your.
Thank you. Thank you for telling me.
Okay, uh, is there any additional discussion? I see Susan Walker ha- has a question online, but I think we answered it.
What would the approximate cost per year once the HR system is implemented? And it sounds like up to ninety-eight hundred, but it variable depending on the number of staff that we're.
Yes, that's correct.
There, there are going to be a few things that will save money on through the integration of this system. The laser fish is going away. That's, uh, up until this year, that was costing us twenty-six thousand dollars a year. Um, in the current year, and what council has approved, that's gone down to thirteen thousand dollars. So we, we are able to save some money this year. We haven't given official notice to laser fish, so if they're online, they're. That one more year and, and we will no longer use that system. And there are other workflow changes that are, are going to take place that are going to save us, uh, time and effort and the way we do our processing.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, yes, Councilmember.
And I, I imagine this is more secure as well, correct? Just, um, as far as like data security and identification security and things like that for employees.
You're a hundred and fifty percent correct, yes.
That's, okay, I kind of got that.
Okay, uh, we have a question. Uh, Mr. Orleans, do you have a question? If you could please come to the microphone.
I do, Orleans still a resident. Uh, the memo, uh, from Mr. Martinez dated June fifteenth. Is not in the publicly distributed package, nor could I find it in the full package, I thought was the full package. So I don't know what's in that memo, but he, the comments here and the comments he made verbally tonight. Suggest, as I recall, uh, that there were other vendors considered by staff. But the optimal choice, the best choice was Paycor, based on criteria that staff determined presumably. I'm just wondering, were there other vendors, uh, offers of this service who, uh, submitted, uh, uh, either a bid? Maybe a more coherent bid that I think some council members are reacting to Paycor's bid, but a bid nonetheless. And what was the nature of the staff's determination that Paycor was better than other vendors, if other vendors were considered?
Uh, Mr. Martinez, uh, you, you covered, uh, that information, but if you could repeat the, uh, other two vendors. Uh, that, there were two other vendors.
Well, actually there were, um, in addition to Paycor, there were three other vendors.
Three others, oh, excuse me. Okay, and, uh, the criteria, it was not simply the lowest bid, but the, uh, the most comprehensive suite of, uh, services. In that, uh, replacing the, uh, laser fish and actually dealing with the, the, the archival information. There were important, uh, features that you were looking for. Is that correct?
That's, that is correct, yes.
Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and take a vote.
It was answered. It was answered, Mr. Orleans. Mr. Orleans, it was answered earlier.
So, uh, this is, Madam Clerk, uh, can you call the rule, please?
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts? Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Ramesh, uh, thank you so much for, uh, joining us tonight and, uh, looking forward to seeing the benefits of, uh, working with you. To, to help improve the, uh, human resource functioning of our city of Greenbelt. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Really appreciate it. Have a great night.
Have a great night. Okay, that's going to bring us to item number thirteen, which has to do with FY twenty-twenty-five Proposed Program Open Space Projects and Overview. Of program changes. And, uh, Terry Ruby is here with us tonight. The county's FY twenty-twenty-five program open space allocation is four million, four point seven million dollars. Compared to thirteen point two million in FY twenty-twenty-four. That's representing a thirty-five percent reduction. Since the county has met its parkland level of service goals. It is allowed to use a maximum of seventy-five percent of its allocation with a ten percent match requirement for development projects. And a minimum of ten percent for acquisition projects. Including the county's FY twenty-twenty-five allocation, the total unencumbered. The total unencumbered program open space balance for the county, including participating jurisdictions. Is twenty-six million, five hundred and twenty thousand, seventy dollars, of which eighteen million, two hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. Is eligible for development projects. Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission has stated that it plans to encumber nineteen million in FY twenty-twenty-five. Leaving seven million available for municipal uses. The Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission staff is proposing significant changes to how program open space funding is allocated in the county. In summary, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission staff is proposing to place all unencumbered funds in one pot. That can be spent by Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission or municipalities in a given year. And, uh, there was a presentation prepared by the Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission on the proposed changes. And a memorandum prepared by city planning staff outlining the proposed changes. And its recommendations for FY twenty-twenty-five program open space project funding are provided in the packet. So, uh, to fully benefit from the program open space program changes. And to ensure that the city capitalizes on its unencumbered balance as FY twenty-twenty-four. Staff recommends city council support the submittal of two development projects to be included in the county's FY twenty-twenty-five program open space annual program. Uh, that would be the Greenbelt Aquatic and Fitness Center indoor pool deck structural repairs at one million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With ninety percent being program open space funded. And the Greenbelt Station Outdoor Recreation Facilities, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, with ninety percent being program open space funded. Specifically funding to continue to address items identified in the Greenbelt Station Greenspace's Visioning Plan developed by the Neighborhood Design Center. Uh, those in particular amenities will be added to the Creekfront Recreation Area off of Indian Creek Trail. With a subsequent plan for the area and community feedback serving as a guide. Ms. Ruby, thank you so much for, uh, joining us tonight. Uh, that was a lot to read. But just the same, uh, this is a big deal, these changes, uh, for the county. The way that, uh, we are, uh, dealing with the state program open, uh, space funding. So first, could you briefly describe program open space funding? And then maybe talk just a little bit about why, why you think the county is making this change?
Well, yes, um, the program open space is, is funded through the state transfer tax, point five percent of the state transfer tax. I think that's why you will, we see a, a larger reduction this year just because of, of sa- sales being down as, as the county had indicated. Um, historically, Prince George County, I believe, and is one, is the only one or one of the only, uh, counties in the state. To actually share its, who has historically shared its POS allocation to municipalities. Typically, it's controlled at the county level and then dispersed, uh, that way. Um, over the years, since my, being here over thirty years, um, the POS, the county has eight participating jurisdictions. In which it has provided or allocated, if you will, a POS funding on an annual basis, based on a percent of your population. Um, over, I guess, more recently, other jurisdictions have indicated an interest in benefiting or participating. In the county's program open space, um, fu- funding or allocation that it receives from the state on an annual basis. Um, so that was one reason for the change. Another is the county does, as you can see in their presentation, have a significant unencumbered balance. And that is concerning, uh, to the state and they've indicated that concern to the state. So the county, uh, has indicated be, that one of the other reasons for its proposals, they believe that one of the reasons for the unencumbered balance is. That the monies that are being given or allocated, if you will, to the, your local jurisdiction is just not enough to support the, the larger projects and so forth. So people are ba- if you will, banking their, their, uh, monies. Um, and as well as you, you know, uh, historically, we were, uh, required to use, the county was required to use. Twenty-five percent, uh, um, of its allocation to, um, acquisition funding, um, to acquisition projects. There, there was, um, that's based on, if you, to understand, I should go back and say that. In, in, for the state of Maryland, until you reach thirty acres per thousand. You are subject to certain acqui- to spend certain amount of your POS funding and acquisition. As of last year, the county reached that goal. So as a result, we were, they were like giving us the ability to use all of our, um, monies towards acquisition because they were using a certain percentage. Um, so in, in their opinion, the local jurisdictions just didn't have the acquisition projects, if you will. And so we were, they were, we, the balance for unencumbered for acquisition was growing as well. So with those concerns, um, coupled with the interest amongst other jurisdictions to participate. And they're wanting to, if you will, make larger amounts of money available to communities who have larger capital improvement projects. Or larger acquisition projects, they have proposed these changes. Uh, our initial discussions with the county is they, we were, all municipalities were required on a staff level. Just to identify perhaps projects they felt their city council would want to move forward. To see where those projects, um, fell in terms of a budgetary, um, amount in terms, as relates to the unencumbered balance. So far, with indications where we have, we have shared these two projects that we're bringing the council this evening to the county. Um, they have indicated they believe they have sufficient funding to fund those projects. Because what they've found is that the demand from, on a local perspective, isn't meeting, if you will, their supply. I think over time that will change. We may have to revisit that as that little balance gets smaller and smaller. And it becomes more of a competitive process, which POS has never been. Um, so I think we'll have to monitor that closely, determine if this new framework, if you will, um, is meeting, you know, the needs of the local jurisdictions. As, as, and our jurisdiction particularly.
Hey, what did we use our program open space funding for last year?
Um, we are, we are using it for Buddy Attic Park Parking Lot Project. And then we, um, used it for the Lake Crest Tennis Courts. I'm about to apply for a, um, reimbursement for that. We had two other projects in there. We had something for, uh, I believe it was Spring Hill Lake and the, uh, recreation amenities. We ended up using ARPA monies for those. Um, so that is part of the unencumbered balance. What we have encumbered for, uh, is also, as I indicated in my memo, is for the splash pad. But since we're not moving forward with that, the state, because it's been on the books for, I think, since two thousand nine, we are revert that monies. They're requiring us to revert that monies back. So that has been included in what I've indicated in our memo as our current unencumbered balance.
Well, thank you, thank you. So the two projects that are proposed for this year, you want to. So the two projects that are proposed for this year, you want to give us a quick, I don't know if you have any slides or anything?
I do not, I think they're known, they've been, they've both been talked about publicly before. The one is the structural repairs to the pool deck at the Aquatic and Fitness Center. And the second is, and we discussed, the second one is part of the acquisition of parcel AD4 in Greenbelt Station was that we would make available program open space to fund the second phase of improvements, which would be down along Branchville and the stream bank there along the trail system. So I've been in consultation with Mr. Varda and Mr. Fallon, and they're engaging and hopefully Neighborhood Design Center do a little bit more public outreach so that we can flesh out that design. As indicated in the county's presentation, they are only interested in shovel-ready projects, so we, that's why we focused on these two projects as well, as well as along, because our budgetary needs as it relates to the, especially the pool project was really a surprise at the time, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Say that again.
And it's big.
Yeah. Hey, so with the, by the Indian Creek Trail off of Branchville Road, it's tough to park, I guess it's not so tough to really park over there, but as far as the community feedback, when we use program open space funding, it's supposed to benefit the whole community. So with gathering feedback, it's going to be the whole committee, community that's involved in providing feedback?
In the terms of the planning, I think the focus right now and from the recreation perspective is, is the community, Greenbelt Station community. So that's who they've been engaging with, but our recreation facilities are open to the public. Parking is, and to be quite frank, there is no parking and if we are able to provide it, it'll be very limited. So mostly we'll only be serving the, you know, those that can really walk there at this point in time because there's not parking available on Branchville Road, which is a county road. And there is, like I said, in key, there's only a very small, we could potentially put a very small parking, it's not a very large space, if you will.
But it's an interesting space and it's sort of a cross section, people come up from Lake Artemisia and they're continuing on, particularly on bikes. So that seems like a really natural place for some sort of a, not just a bike kiosk, but some sort of a station where people can stop for a minute, maybe look at a map and see that there are restaurants around or notice that there's a gas station right there where they can pump up their tires with air. Yeah, Mayor Portem?
Oh, no, I didn't have any particular thoughts, I think, yeah.
Councilmember?
Think, thank you for doing all the work to try to look at different funding sources for both projects. I agree that the, the pool deck was a surprise, I think, for everybody. As far as the space on Indian Creek Trail, I think that there is probably some good opportunity to do some more engagement with Franklin Park since it is adjacent to that, as well as trying to connect with whatever the next phases of Beltway Plaza are going to be. Because I know we're looking for what's going to happen there, so we wouldn't necessarily want to duplicate what is in whatever plan is going to go in Beltway Plaza, we would want to supplement that. So being strategic on what that could look like so that we could have the most, as much as possible, that would be, that would be helpful. And then I guess my question is, is the intent in working with the Neighborhood Design Center to get somewhat of a, like a layout or an actual design plan, which is like, okay, you're sort of blocking the space?
Correct, how to best utilize the parcel based on community feedback and what we is determined to be the amenities that are desired, yes.
Mr. Roberts?
I hate to say it, but this is pretty pathetic, really, because I don't know if anyone here is really old enough to remember the beginnings of program open space and what it was meant for. It was protect, to protect our land, our air, our water, our forests, our wetlands. To purchase land to protect it for future generations, that was what it's about. And now look at what we're doing. We're taking all this money and we're just spending it on construction projects, things that are going to have no impact, not allow us to have any impact on the climate change that's ravaging our planet. We're just going to spend all this money on construction projects. I think everyone here that votes for this and the staff, anyone that supports this use of program open space and what it was supposed to be for, and to go into something like this where 90% is construction projects, you know, we just bought some land, we didn't bother to buy it with program open space because, oh, we didn't want to have to protect that land. Well, we're not helping future generations, we're hurting them right now. So all I can say is this is pathetic. Pathetic, pathetic, and pathetic. Of course I'll be voting against this.
And just to clarify, one thing I said incorrectly, historically it was 50% acquisition, 50% development for jurisdictions now, so 25% is still required to go to acquisition and 75. Now that's a minimum, and as you can see, the county did include what their program is for 25, I believe they have nine or $6 million, $6 million in acquisition projects, and I, they also have some monies from acquisition in previous years as well. But the program has evolved to allow for more monies to be used for development as open space goals are being met, and that's by jurisdiction.
Yeah, development, projects that are related to recreational programs.
Yes, correct.
So this change from Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning and the way that the county is actually doing this, you know, it's a good thing because Prince George's County has a great deal of land that's rather pristine along 301, north up around the Patuxet River and down in South County. And I think doing it this way, the way that they proposed and kind of looking at aggregating more funding that's unencumbered for land purchases, I think that's a part of the plan. So to Mr. Roberts' point, perhaps this change is a good thing. Unfortunately, Greenbelt's landlocked, there is no, oh, well, if you can pull some land out of the blue, it's not fair. So I think the, excuse me, sir, I've got the, I've got the floor here. So this funding for the pool deck renovations is, the project's something that's totally unanticipated, it's a large project, it seems like a really good fit, and of course the recreational purposes over at Greenbelt Station's a good thing, so I plan to support this. Any other comments from council, Ms. Pompey?
So even though the pool is technically not an outdoor space, it still qualifies because it's a recreation facility?
Correct, it's a recreation facility. We've used it on pool, on the gym floor refurbishing, bleachers, anything that's improving, a capital improvement project that's improving a recreation facility and/or something that is adding to your recreation inventory, whether it be open space and/or facilities.
Got it, okay, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
Ms. Pope?
I will, of course, support this project as well, but I do just want to keep in mind that a splash pad in our pool would be really nice.
That certainly is on our radar.
Been asking since 2009, I'm just going to, I have to say it again.
Okay, Mr. Hartman?
Michael Hartman to Court Garden Way. Ms. Ruby, I know that you have done this, but I'm wondering if you could explain some of the considerations you had about accessibility for people with disabilities at the Indian Creek Trail, that when you said there's small area for parking, et cetera, it's usual for you to also think about accessibility, so I'm wondering what your thoughts were about that?
Certainly, that is certainly something that will be taken into account during the planning and conceptual design processes, how we can, you know, ensure and maximize opportunities for all, and accessibility is one of those, you're certainly correct. And I, but I'd be lying if I didn't say certain sites have more challenges than other sites, but it is in the forefront of our thought process along with other criteria as well, age, you know, age and so forth. So the Recreation Department is well aware of that, but I will convey that to them as well, who will be, you know, convening the Neighborhood Design Center and the community as we discuss what those possible uses can be.
Well, thank you, are there any additional questions or comments? Anybody online? Do you want to go ahead and read it?
Sure, the question is from Alex Campbell. When you say a subsequent plan for the area and community feedback serving as a guide, is that referencing the NDC plan or would this be in addition to?
Well, yes and yes, the, it's referencing the NDC plan, however, Recreation has indicated that they plan to do more community outreach involvement as we plan that second phase. So we'll be utilizing information that we collected during that process, but we're also looking for new information, I will certainly convey your interest too in expanding it to all of, you know, those in Greenbelt West as well.
Mayor Portem?
Well, I'm just, I think that original feedback, that original plan was not a detailed plan that could be constructed, it was conceptual. So it's, I think, it sounds like we have a better chance of getting the money if we can show we have something that is closer to ready to go than the broad ideas that came out of the first process with, with, with NDC, especially for that lower area by the creek.
One final question, so if we go ahead and approve these recommendations tonight, when will we likely hear from the county, from Maryland National Park and Planning, whether or not we've received the funding?
I believe, so our program is due to them June 17th, I believe they must have theirs into the state by the end of June, so we should be hearing from them then. All indication is that our project will be included, then we would be able to start encumbering the money effective July 1. So I'll certainly will update council if anything changes based on our preliminary discussions with, with the county, but I anticipate positive.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone, Mr. Semeron?
I'd like to add some future, future planning initiatives around this, that if, when this project is approved, and we expect it will be, it frees up ARPA money that we had set aside for the pool deck repairs. And we would reevaluate the elevator situation, whether we can continue operating the elevator through repairs for another year so that we can apply back to POS funding, or if we need to utilize the ARPA money that gets freed up from this project on the elevators. So that's another unfore, I don't want to say unforeseen because we're aware that the elevators needed to be replaced back in 2017, but they broke down just recently and now we need to do something about it.
Definitely. Ms. Ruby, is there a website, a state website, which kind of provides a listing of, so, I mean, some people raise questions about how we use our funding and we use it the same as other municipalities, so is there a state website that lists program open space projects?
Projects have to be approved by the Board of Public Works, so you can go on past agendas and see, I don't believe that there is one place where they actually post, there is a website dedicated to program open space, how, you know, the parameters and the guidelines and so forth. I don't believe they have a list of all POS funded projects, but if anybody's interested in that, I maintain a list for the city, I have a list of how we've spent it historically dating far back, that I'm happy to share as well.
Yeah, well, it's a great program and I think it's important to recognize those program open space projects, so I'm looking forward to getting a plaque or something out there at the Buddy Attic Park.
Yes, that's one requirement, all POS projects must have a sign acknowledging that we use the funding, so you'll be seeing that going in there as well as in, at the Lake Crest tennis courts.
Very good, very good. Did someone make a motion on this? I need a motion.
No.
Just to adopt the recommendations or, I guess we don't, we don't need, no?
Need to make a motion?
Good, but since nobody, nobody wants to, I guess. But, okay. Hey, let's move on to item number 14, which is ARPA American Rescue Plan Act, Bus Stop Safety and Accessibility Improvements, a proposed project list. And Ryan Sigworth is here with us, Ryan, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the staff memo outlines, the, the city had allocated $150,000 in ARPA money for bus stop improvements, and the time has come to decide which bus stops that we're going to seek to improve. These improvements are mainly focused on amenities like shelters and benches, but also handicap accessibility and safety. I did want to go in briefly, kind of the criteria we used to decide what bus stops we were going to use, or improve, I'm sorry. We based that on the relevant master plans, there was a 2013 bus stop study that ranked the top, I think it was the top 25 bus stops in the city. There was also a sort of, for lack of a better term, a wish list done by Public Works in recent years, indicating what improvements they'd like to see at specific bus stops. We looked at Metro ridership data from 2022 was the most recent data that I had available to me. There's one on the list there as a citizen request, and just kind of going around the city and looking at bus stops and what they need. This list of approximately, I think it was 38 bus stops is not, it does not address the problems at every bus stop, but that is the list that we have come up with to, to start, to start with. And then my understanding is that the city allocates certain capital funds every year for, for bus stop improvements. So if there's other bus stops we want to look at in future years, we can do that with that money. But for the moment, this is the list that we have proposed to use that $150,000 on. You do have a list in front of you. One of the, I got some late information, late Friday and looked at it today, we had sent the, the list out to an individual at Metro at Womata to look at the list and ask them if there are any, any stops they'd like to see improved or that they had any issues with. And I, to their credit, they responded very quickly, but they suggested that the stop that's about midway down on the list at Southway and Ridge, southbound on the G14 route, be removed because they had more up-to-date ridership data than I had for last quarter, and there were no ins and offs, as they say, at that stop. They basically said, we'd suggest you take that off because there's not enough ridership there to warrant it.
Interesting.
Right there at the corner?
I'm sorry?
That's the one that's at the corner or a little bit further?
Yeah, I believe that's the one, it, for lack of a better term, it's Southway and Ridge, but I believe it's, I believe it's north of Ridge, it's kind of in between the block there.
Right.
It's on the side, side where the sidewalk is, and there's just a sign there and there's nothing else at the moment.
Maybe if we had a bench or something, people would.
Well, that was the initial proposal, was creating a concrete landing pad for handicap accessibility between the sidewalk and the back of curb, there wasn't a suggestion there, the list didn't include adding a bench there, it was just, it was simply a handicap accessibility improvement.
Got it, got it. Let's see, there's, there's a map and there's a spreadsheet, I was wondering if we can kind of put that up on the screen, not that the people on Zoom at home would be able to see it.
Yeah, so I had made a GIS database of all the proposed improvements and cross-referenced those with Metro ridership data from 2022, and this is the list, this is the geographic list of the bus stops in the spreadsheet.
It looks like they're pretty much evenly dispersed throughout the city, and looking at the spreadsheet, it looks like it's mostly adding concrete pads, a few new shelters, but a lot of solar lighting in the ones with shelters, which is nice, yeah.
Yes, if you recall, some years back, the city did a pilot project for solar lighting at three bus stops, I believe, and in the memo, there's a picture of a bus shelter on Hanover Parkway, that's kind of, it's figure four in your memo, that shows not only a shelter, but also solar lighting feed on it as well. And so this list proposes to expand those solar lights from past the pilot project phase.
Right. This is a little bit of a technical question, but those solar panels on, on the bus stops, would they generate enough power if we had the kiosk or a sign that would indicate the next bus that's coming in? Was, is enough electricity generated to power one of those as well?
I can't answer that question, but what I can say is that Womata does those signs, and so that would really be up to their standards, so I can't answer that question. We wouldn't be putting those signs in the, in the stops, in the shelters.
Be grateful you get one on the stops on Greenbelt Road across from Greenway Center on both sides, those are really the point where the most buses really pass through there, all the bus routes go through there.
Those informational signs were like at the stops along Crescent, right here, but yeah, that's a, that's a Womata thing that they add if they want to.
Got it. Mayor Portem?
Yeah, there's a question online, and it's from Alex Campbell, who's a Greenbelt West resident. resident. It says that this list is avoiding state roadways. I assume that includes Green Belt Road. The bus stop outside Green Belt Station regularly gets over a dozen college students in the mornings. Any any idea when that stop, could it get any kind of shelter?
Yes. So the reason that this list avoids state highways is we need to encumber this money by the end of the calendar year. And trying to coordinate with state highway on improvements like this takes a lot of time that we don't really have. So I would suggest that we, in future years with capital funds that we set aside in the budget, that we focus on state roads for that money rather than this money. I would love to work on state roads. It's just the timing of all of this doesn't really work out for that.
Okay, other questions? Would someone like to make a motion? We got some other questions, but just to move things along, would someone like to make a motion? There's no motion on this?
Before you make your, before you make your motion and vote, I did want to provide just two more little pieces of feedback that I got from Womata. In addition to removing that stop on Southway, the Womata representative recommended that we move that improvement to to the courthouse on Cherrywood to improve those bus stops at the intersection there in front of the courthouse.
It's a good idea.
And then he suggested if we, that shelters on Hanover, if we were going to Hanover Parkway, if we were going to replace any of them completely, rather than just doing repairs on them, which I'm working with Public Works now to determine. He suggested we move those stops closer to the intersections. But that's, as the spreadsheet said, this is a working list, so things may adjust a little bit.
Hey, looking at the list here, is there Hanover Parkway and Oreglen Drive right at the lake where they're doing, or the Stormwater Management Pond? Is that an area that's scheduled to actually get a bench? That's a pretty popular stop because it's where you get off to go to the post office. Or if you were coming from the post office, you would, or one of the medical offices that you would.
I'd be happy to check the ridership data and look into it. And then if, as you can see, we have $150,000 and we're roughly $5,000.
It's not a lot of money.
So adding a bench shouldn't be, there's that springboard there just for any sort of cost overruns, but I'd be happy to look at that and potentially add that into the list.
That's great, please do. Ms. Pope?
Yes, I just want to say thank you. I saw Lake Crest Drive is on there as well, so I'm very pleased to see that.
Ms. Weber?
I guess I just wondered, so so can we just move the bus stops if we build a new structure? It seems like that, that that's an interesting suggestion. I wouldn't have thought we could just say, oh, we're just going to rebuild the the bus stop in a different place, just move it a few feet over.
I think that would require some coordination with Womata, but since the Womata representative is making the suggestion, I don't think that's a big problem. That being said, I would be perfectly happy with moving the bus stop and then letting Womata figure it out.
I guess if they brought it up, if if they're, yes, you're right. If they brought it up, then I guess maybe that it just.
Yeah. When the bus stop changes location, the driver will figure it out.
Let's make sure we get that in writing. Okay, any questions online?
Not any additional ones, no.
Okay, Ms., someone make, if you want to make a motion, we'll have a little more discussion or questions, but would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would, I would like to move that we recommend the proposed bus improvement list.
With the adjustments from Mr. Sigworth?
With the adjustments that were just mentioned from Mr. Sigworth, yes.
I'll second that. So when we encumber the the money, these improvements after, would they actually take place this winter or fall, or is this something we'd be doing next spring?
I had a meeting with Public Works, yes, or I'm sorry, last week. And the Assistant Director, Jamie Ferrer, and I have a meeting with the Director of Public Works on Thursday to talk about procurement and obtain materials. The money needs to be encumbered by the end of the year, and then you have two years to actually complete the project. So I know that Public Works is somewhat concerned with a lot of the, they have a number of departments with ARPA money and ARPA projects. So I think they're kind of determined or concerned about throughput and staff resources to get everything done, but we're.
Rightfully so.
We're shooting for, to get everything done within two years.
Sounds good. Let's see, a couple of our questions from the public, Mr. Hartman and Mr. Orleans.
Michael Hartman, Duke Court Garden Way. I'm very pleased that we're doing this. A lot of the bus stops need a lot of help for, and I like to model appropriate language by saying people with disabilities rather than the handicap. But I do have some questions. I'm wondering if we could, if we are going to continue when we're building shelters to leave space for people who use wheelchairs or walkers. We do in some and some we don't. So I hope that we do continue that practice of leaving a space next to a bench, but still under the over, the overhead shelter so that people who use wheelchairs can be sheltered as well. And not also enough so that people can also stand in those areas as well. I have a question about figure, figure number one, where it shows a bus stop in need of a short sidewalk extension to landing pad. It brings up a question that I have that of looking at the navigation or the access to the bus stop for people with disabilities, how they will get to that bus stop. So it's not enough to make the bus stop accessible in these ways if people can't get to the bus stop. So I'm looking at routes that people would have to take in order to get to the bus stop. I think that's a very important consideration as well. I understand that there is a balance between removing green grass and other natural spaces in order to make pathways accessible to people who use wheelchairs or walkers or people with baby strollers as well in those kinds of situations. So that's when I would like these considerations as well. Public Works has been doing a great job and Planning Department has done a very good job in providing access to many of the bus stops. But as you know, there is a, an issue with sidewalks as well. And that's what I mean by people getting to the bus stop in a safe manner if they use wheelchairs or if they have unsteady gates when they walk so that they need something hard to to walk on. And and just curious about the the criteria and the prioritization of of those bus stops. I know it was from responses to Womata and also people as well, is that? And the master plan? Okay, and the master plan too, okay. Well, I hope that these considerations for people with disabilities are are in the in the plans and that they be very high in the priority for looking at those various issues. Thank you.
I did want to take the opportunity to try to unpack some of that. So within the staff memo, if you look at figure five, that has a shelter there, that that image is sort of what we don't want to see. That shelter blocks the access for people between the sidewalk and the and the curb face where the bus. So there's no, there's no loading zone there. The shelter is awfully close to the curb, so there's not enough space for the bus to handle that. So that's, that's, I mean, the shelters, it's not the shelters issue, but the, yeah, perfect. But we want to make sure that when we put shelters in, that we maintain the loading zone for wheelchairs. And under Womata's design guidelines, that's essentially a five foot wide pad between, at the curb face, that goes back from the curb face, eight feet. So that allows for a bus to pull up so they can deploy their ramp down from inside the bus, and that leaves enough loading space that you don't push a person in a wheelchair off the back of the sidewalk or the area. So and having those shelters where you have enough room to maintain that with some extra concrete to to provide that, that's one of the goals and one of the upgrades that we want to see happen. In response to that question on figure one, I want to say that's Lastner and I forget what street that is, but this is one of the few areas. So there's a, there's a lot of bus stops that, I mean, we could improve one bus stop with a long sidewalk, but then that would blow all of the $150,000. So, but this is one of the few places where you have an existing crosswalk with existing ramps. It needs a truncated dome, a detectable warning on the ramp. But this is one of the few locations where you can leverage the existing paved sidewalk there and provide a stub off of it to get to that bus stop with the eight foot wide but, or five foot wide, but eight foot deep pad to upgrade the bus stop, which right now, if you see this stop sign, or the bus stop sign is just to the right of the stop sign in that intersection, which, so there's no amenity, all there's no path, there's no nothing, there's just a sign there. And so this is one of the few locations where a short extension of the sidewalk to access, that'll allow this bus stop to tie into the rest of the pedestrian network that exists today. Does it solve the total problem? No, it doesn't. But it's a small improvement that can be done easily as part of this pool of money.
A quick question with regard to the prioritization of bus stops. I believe when the survey of bus stops was completed, I guess 2013 or 2014, I think they were, they were prioritized or ranked, and then we were doing a certain number of improvements each year. So I want to, want to acknowledge and thank you for putting this on to a the GIS layer so that it's easier to look at. And I'm looking forward to a time in the near future when when the public can actually take a look. As you've done that, did you prioritize the stops based on the greatest needs or the cost benefit?
I did not go that deeply. Some of those stops in the studies were also on, I'm sure that some of you are aware, and it's coming up on your July 8 meeting, that Womata released their better bus for 2025 and on, and there's going to be some route changes. So one of the other things that we looked at was we don't want to spend money on bus stops that may or may not exist. And so, I mean, we're, this, this sort of exercise is not about what stops are important and should remain. It's trying to, trying to, you know, catch the the moving football and improve the stops that we know are going to be there. And so some of those stops were, you know, that may not exist anymore, were in that list, so.
Got it, understood. Mayor Portem?
I was just going to comment to Mr. Hartman. There were also, we have a list of the bicycle and pedestrian improvements that are a separate list from the bus stop improvements. And I can think of at least one example we were shown that does include actually paving an area that is not paved to make better access to the bus stop over on Hanover. And I think there were probably others, but so I think the problem, we're seeing little bits and pieces, but there are some other pieces that are happening with, as sort of another list of projects with some of those improvements. There's still always going to be more spaces we can find to do improvements, but that is at least one that I remember.
And I will say that Jamie Ferrer and I have this sort of pet project to put a sidewalk on the other side of Southway from the new Green Belt sign down to serve all of that along the other side of Southway. And so, I mean, maybe we could do that, but then that would be one improvement and not the 40 that we're proposing. So it's, it's kind of.
Concrete's too expensive.
And well, and there's always another grant program out there to try to move forward with that project, but we we are determined at some point to get that project done.
Right. Let's see, Mr. Orleans, you had a question? Mr. Orleans, you had a question?
Abdul Orleans, President Phil. Totally apart from the fact that I think this is wrongheaded, inappropriate, unfortunate use of the city's ARPA monies, that aside, the question of bus stop improvements yet to be determined, however counsel might vote, will be coming up at, could be coming up at any of the public hearings that Womata is having. It was requested of Ms. Andrews, I believe she did, post the notice from Womata. There's a public hearing tomorrow virtually. There's another one on Thursday virtually. Next week on Wednesday, the 26th, there's going to be an in-person public hearing as well as an opportunity to be present for what they're characterizing as a discovery day. Fun things to see about Womata and the changes they want to make, and the county for that matter. But both of those, the virtual hearings tomorrow and this Thursday and the discovery day will be occurring before July 8th, which is when I understand counsel is going to be having another transit session, hopefully including the county, although when I last asked, I was told they hadn't been invited. Womata and/or the county bus, the bus, might have their own reasons for wanting to move a bus stop. But as it relates to Green Belt, they may not be the best sources of where a bus stop should be currently or in the future in Green Belt. I believe in the past, representatives of Metro Womata Planning Staff have said that they would defer to local jurisdictions about things such as the best place for a bus stop. As I understand the changes proposed on the new P12, it will not be turning right or left from Southway or Westway onto Ridge Road, but turning left or right from Southway onto Crescent Road. I don't know how many more people are, would find a bus stop on Crescent Road between Southway and Guardway more accessible than now would find a bus stop accessible between, on Ridge Road between Southway and Guardway or Westway. But I think there's a much smaller number. If Green Belt Council would, if Green Belt Council and management would solicit from Green Belt residents, given the proposed changes in bus stop locations, what Green Belt residents think of that, I think on July 8th, Green Belt Council and management would be in a much stronger position to represent to Womata Planning Staff that they're full of it, which of course they are anyway, and I am anyway, and counsel is anyway. And I hope counsel will encourage attendance tomorrow at the virtual public hearing and the 26th in Sootland. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments online? If not, let's go ahead and take a vote. A motion was made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your good work, Mr. Sigworth. Thank you, Ms. Ruby. Hey, item number 15 is an item authorizing the city manager to execute the recodification, supplementation, and online code hosting service contract. And there's a memo in the packet. The city's existing code is outdated with the last supplemental update dating back to 2012. To ensure that our municipal code is current, comprehensive, and accessible, it is crucial to proceed with the recodification process. This effort will involve making the language used in the code gender neutral and hosting it online, allowing for quick updates and making the city code searchable and easily accessible to the public. Staff proposes that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Mini Code. Scope of this contract includes recodification of the city code, regular updates to keep the code current, hosting the code online with a searchable interface, gender neutralization of the language used in the code. The implementation period is approximately 18 months with access to the platform within a couple of months after the contract is executed. The city council has allocated $30,000 in the budget. Line item number 30 for professional services and staff is seeking, seeking authorization for $17,925 to cover the costs associated with the contract with Mini Code. The current codification does not reflect recent legal updates and municipal needs. Ensuring the code is up to date and accessible online promotes transparency and compliance with modern governance standards. The searchable online platform will make it easier for staff, officials, and residents to access and navigate the city's code. So it's recommended that city council approve the authorization of the city manager to execute the contract with Mini Code. So by doing this, it's going to facilitate the timely and effective recodification of our municipal code, enhancing both its accuracy and accessibility. So I got, is there a motion and we can discuss after someone puts the the motion on the table? Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion.
Okay.
I, where are we, where are we finding? I, I move that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Mini Code for $18,454.97 to cover the costs associated with the contract with Mini Code.
Let's see, I got $17,925.
I'm looking right here. I'm looking right here.
I have a question though.
Seventeen? It's eighteen, okay.
Okay, so we allocated 30,000, right? So is this an additional 18,000?
For the whole professional services line.
Council had allocated 30,000 for the expenditure, this is the actual expenditure. So we're not spending the full 30,000.
Okay, so but we, okay, gotcha. All right, thank you. So it's 18,000, yeah?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Hey, just a couple of things. You know, we've had a lot of discussion about updating the city code. And it's my understanding that the best practice is that this is done every 10 years, sometimes more frequently, but every 10 years. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that back in 2021, it was council's intention to to go ahead and do this update. But then COVID came, so here we are a few years later. So it's great to get this done.
I still have the big book, so I'm going to bring that to the office.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Minor, minor, minor feedback or adjustment. So the the charter review should be reviewed every 10 years. The code requires to be updated at least annually because there are ordinances that the that council passes that are law. So for example, at minimum, council would approve one ordinance approving the budget, and that's law.
Right. My bad on that.
Yeah, I know we talked about the code and that's the sorry, the charter, and the charter review is the next agenda item.
Correct, yes. Hey, one thing that they were talking about at the N L C Leadership Conference last week. A number of municipalities are loading up their code and ordinances into a not just a searchable database, but one that uses AI a bit so that you can just query, ask a question, or a staff member will be able to look in and in plain language, ask a question about what what's required by a certain ordinance to do a certain process. And it seems to be a utilization that a lot of municipalities are thinking about. And it's all it's all cordoned off, so you you set up something like this and it's not like open on the internet. Instead, it's a closed, frozen database that we would control.
It's specific to the code that it's reading, so chat boxes can be trained to provide responses on specific code. One of the services that we'll be getting through MuniCode is access to over 4,000 data sets of ordinances and resolutions that are part of the MuniCode. So this the licensing does include an AI tool called Muni Code Pro that would allow us to search ordinances and resolutions across 4,000 databases. So when council asks, oh, could we get an ordinance for EV chargers? We can, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we'll go into Muni Code Pro, pull up ordinances that address citing EV parking issues.
Mayor Portem?
Yeah, so I guess some of my questions have to do, it seems like in general, obviously, a very good thing to be able to search our code better and all of that. How does this interact with Granicus or whatever we have in terms of our next, hopefully improved website interface?
So this, the MuniCode is designed to work within the Civic Plus ecosystem. Currently, we're using, should council approve this contract, this would be your third software solution with Civic Plus. We have Next Request, which is our public information request management system. We have the Social Archive, which is our archiving software for social media posts. So all the mayor's posts are archived in perpetuity, so. So this would be the third component. There is a a a part of the suite is agenda management system, which allows for seamless integration between an ordinance that gets presented to council through the agenda process. And when council approves that, we just go in the system and click approve. And when the supplemental, the recodification happens, it just happens automatically behind the scenes. So there isn't anything for us to do. That requires an additional license, the agenda management. We we met today to discuss the website and what do we need to do to transition away from Granicus into another platform. For the website management nor the agenda management, we haven't made a decision what's going to be our provider. But MuniCode does offer a solution for agenda management.
But it's sort of separate, but it's separate would but would be in a sense what linked from our website to this sort of separate platform that has all the municipal code in it.
Correct, correct. So there's benefit to that being separate, that we like MuniCo and it's a robust tool and we can use it for our code management. And then there's this other agenda management that should it fit our needs, we can have those two link together.
And the search function seemed very, I noticed that as well, the ability to search the the other the other municipal databases as well as it, I think. I mean, aside from AI, just doing some better Boolean searches and things, I think would be would be helpful. I also was good to see that it looks like they have a translate, a Google Translate off option and I think some accessibility improvements. Although I did notice they didn't guarantee all of the PDFs were fully 508 compliant, I think. But they said they would, if they were compliant, they would stay compliant when they were uploaded. I did notice that 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 language. And then for in terms of the searchable database, would this just be the city code or would it also include the city charter documents? I know the the updates of them is separate, but in terms of being searchable and being easier to access.
Yes, this recodification process includes the charter.
Okay, and and we are looking at the premium services that have some of those extra features.
Yes, the the proposal before you includes all the premium services. So that includes the MuniCo Pro, the branding of the the system. So when folks lock in, it'll have our logo and and we can brand it to the Greenbelt so that it's not a a generic system. On the PDF files that you that you reference, the responsibility of those documents being searchable falls on the the customer. So when we digitize those amendments or attachments, they need to be compliant.
Yeah, I did note that they say that they that it the the city code has to be in the appropriate digital format as sort of the front end, I noticed that in their requirements as well.
Correct. The on the translation services, it uses the Google Translate engine. There is a disclaimer that we would put on our website or on the on the landing page that any translation interpretations of the, so let me take a step back. The translation, because language can be so complicated, the translation may not the intent of a law may not fully translate into another language. So we had to put a disclaimer that the the intention of the law is meant to be in in English. So there could be some variations in the language and the translation of the.
So you can't use the the translation as a as a as a legal document, but it might help you understand what the the ordinance is about. Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions from council, concerns, thoughts? Is there anybody online with a question?
Oh, and a couple of other features this has, we will get select number of books, binders, part of the recodification process. There there will be digital versions available for download, so folks can download the entirety of the code or chapters, and they can download it in PDF or Word documents. They could also purchase, so if anyone wants to order a the full code and have it delivered to the home, they can order right from the system.
It's expensive though, right?
Well, we'll provide the copies to council, but if you wanted to gift them for the holidays, you could.
I feel like we need to make. We need to make an embossed cover one for for Jay Davis, embossed covered like fancy city code. And maybe I'll do that as a Christmas gift for Jay.
See, there's there's a gift idea there.
Need a copy for my inside.
I have the old one, I'll bring that one in. That big book I have.
Right. Hey, just a point of information with our PD, all of the PDF files that are associated with city business right now, as we produce them, they have to be searchable, that's the policy, right? Any PDF that we produce should be searchable.
That's the intent and a policy. The there our website contains, Chandra quoted 10,000 pages today as we were looking at the website, and many of those pages have PDF documents that are not searchable.
Just want to make sure that going forward, that we do not post or have any PDFs that are not searchable.
Well, and there's a distinction between being searchable and being 508 compliant and tagged properly for screen readers. And those are actually, the one is easier than the other, and yeah, that, yeah. That reminded me though, so because I think they talked about some of the other documents. Could this also be used for things like reports from committee, committee reports, advisory board reports? Some of those as well, I know those aren't, they aren't as, I mean, they are official, but they are not, they don't rise to the level of city code, but they are something that we have people often looking for, and it can be hard to find on our website. That's something this can be used for as well?
Not not this particular software service. There is a tool that Bonita is really excited about, and that's the agenda management because it would allow for the advisory boards to have their own space. They can create their own agenda, load their own reports, and it makes it available to the public. The another another tool that we're not procuring as part of the the package is the MuniCode docs. So a library of documents. So we could load all of our documents onto MuniCode docs as a library and have it available online, make it searchable. So that's another feature we looked at. We're not at that space to acquire that software because we're we're trying to address the the critical issues first.
Okay, Mr. Orleans.
Mr. Orleans, still, first off, I don't question the council's allocation of 17 or 18,000 dollars for any purpose. Spend it all. I do question it, however, the necessity for doing it for this purpose. I'm a couple of questions, is did any enterprise out there other than MuniCode offer its services to agree all for this purpose? Is this is a sole provider of this kind of effort? I tend to doubt it, but I don't know. In any event, I don't think MuniCode or any other vendor should be employed by this retained by the city to do this. I think we ought to, this is an excellent opportunity, this and the next agenda item as well. An excellent opportunity for council and city management to engage residents of Greenbelt and what it means to be a resident of Greenbelt. Earlier tonight, the question came up, is it a violation of code for somebody to be parking his car or hers? That's not an electric car in the electric charging zone. Never would have occurred to me, it probably should be. Do people know that if the registration in their car expires and their car is parked in front of their house, that their car can be towed? That happened to me actually once. I did not know it beforehand. People ought to be encouraged to know more about their residents in the city of Greenbelt than they now do. I'd like to suggest that Chris Cherry be asked, along with participants in the youth camp, to present to council and the city, it could be broadcast, streamed throughout, a reading of the old code and have people call in with suggestions as to what, how that should be changed, what code. There's a variety of things that council and management could do to engage residents in the writing of a new code. Certainly, AI ought to be left out of it, I would argue. With regard to the next item, even though we're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not there yet, sir.
I would suggest that in reviewing the charter, council should first listen to this request from residents that have already been made about amending the charter before it goes off wanting to fund the city solicitor's interpretation of what should be done.
Yeah, thank you.
I would like to provide clarity what this does and what it doesn't do. There are limited changes to the code that would happen only upon council's approval after the project is completed. So for example, the gender neutralization of the language, we will get a proposal for council to adopt if it wants to adopt the proposal of gender neutralization of our code. The other potential changes would be if there are issues identified in our code that are outright outside of compliance with state and federal law. There there might be things that are that obvious to the attorneys that will be reviewing our code and digitizing it that they will point out to us and make recommendations. No other changes are taking place to the code. We're not going to put in language about EV citations against EV chargers or any other other concerns, Ruby. This is digitizing a code. MuniCode is not the only business in town. They are the a provider that provides municipal code services to several entity around us. And that's one of the 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 reasons we had a preference for them, that they understand the county law and other jurisdictions around us. But more importantly, MuniCode provided our last certification in 2010. And they at the end 2012, they were hired to do the recodification, the project fell through. So they have a a copy of our digital code already. They will update all the years from 2010 through the current. So it it's it was it is easier to work with an entity that already has their code than to start fresh with with another entity. I I believe that addresses the concerns raised.
Yeah, well, thank you so much. If there are no further questions from council or online, let's please go ahead and take a vote.
Just just one more thing?
Yes, please.
I want to go on record that I fully support Chris Cherry doing a rendition of our code.
That's right.
Love a dramatic reading of the city code.
Sort of like Gilbert and Sullivan or something, right? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Hey, that's going to bring us up to item number 16, authorizing the city manager to execute the charter review contract. The city charter, which is the foundational legal document for our municipal governance, has not been updated for a significant period. It's crucial that we conduct a thorough review to ensure that it reflects current laws, best practices, and the evolving needs of our community. The expertise of the city solicitor is essential for a detailed and legally sound review of the charter. This review is crucial for maintaining the integrity of our government governance framework and ensuring that it aligns with the current legal standards and best practices. Staff is requesting that the city council approve the authorization for the city manager to encumber funds and make payments for services to the city solicitor not to exceed $15,000 for charter review. These payments, this payment will cover the costs associated with performing a thorough review of the city charter throughout the process. So, Mr. Samron, this project, would you like to say anything in addition? We've sort of talked about this a bit, but a question that usually comes up is with the city solicitor, did you look at other firms or maybe other law firms that just have expertise and in particular do these charter updates?
So this is this, yes and no. We we discussed with our solicitor, from a cost perspective, our solicitor is our legal representative. So this is the this, he's a lawyer. We discussed with our solicitor the resources we need to pull in to look at our code. So while the contract is being done, it's being done with the firm, there will be other attorneys that will be working on this project through the through the law firm. It it's easier for us to go with our with our solicitor because ultimately, whatever legal counsel, outside legal counsel proposes, we still have to run it through our own attorney.
Right, right. Hey, so what's the timeframe for this from the execution of the contract to its completion?
Similarly to the the recodification, that's an 18-month project. We're at the end of our fiscal year. There's the funding is allocated by council in the 2024 budget, not in the 2025 budget. So part of the action here is to encumber these funds and we kick off the project officially in the current fiscal year. And it'll carry through really for how how long council needs the program to run because this is going to involve council's input. We have a work session scheduled on the Charter Review Committee where we have a proposal of creating the committee that's going to have representatives from council, staff, and the community to look at different sections of the code. Ultimately, council at that work session and as a subsequent council meeting will need to determine what is going to be the scope of of work for the Charter Review Committee, what what particular things we need to focus on. The first step is going to be the legal compliance for state and federal compliance. That's Jason Deloche's firm is taking care of that. There'll be other other sections of the code like bond financing that we're required by state to have certain language. We have non-bond financing through STIF programs. So because this activity that we have, we have participated in, we want to ensure that our code reflects the the current language for that. The gender neutralization, we're able to get that service covered through the MuniCode contracts. So we're not going to be adding that to the scope of work for our solicitor unless council wants a second review of that material. The rest will be determined by council, what section of the code you want to focus on.
And once the code is actually all online in one place, it it will be a little bit easier for staff to to review and make updates like gender neutrality. If there are some items that slip through somehow, the city would be able to recommend those changes and and make them on our own efficiently.
Or potentially, there is a a cheaper option, which is self-publishing process, it's cheaper. The we will consider that once the code is fully online and implemented, we we will consider taking over the publishing portion of that. That's not included in our current MuniCo contract, but that is an option available to us should we want to take. should we want to take over our code and manually update it. We could do that. It's, it's our own code.
Okay, Mayor Portem.
Yeah, and I guess, I think, I think you kind of answered my question. So that the idea of this is we're doing this now to authorize the extra money to start the process this fiscal year, but this is separate from any decision about a committee. There was actually, I was talking to a council member at the NLC leadership, and I can't remember where he's from, but they have a standing Charter Review Committee that they just always have in place. Now, interestingly, they, they have each, each council member gets to appoint a member to that committee, which I, which was, which is interesting, and I'm, I'm sure that, that doesn't seem like, doesn't seem like the way we usually do things in Greenbelt, but it was an interesting notion that each council member gets to appoint someone to their Charter Review Committee. But I think more significant was that they had one that was just always standing and always looking at the, the charter. I had not really thought about doing that as a standing thing. I'm not sure we necessarily need that, but just something that was interesting and I was surprised by. So.
Right. If you, if you haven't noticed, we've got a, a, a digital transformation strategy going on. HRIS, finances, Laserfish, Munich Code or code. So we're digitizing a lot of our systems.
So important. Councilmember McKinney.
It might be helpful in the work session that we do have planned to kind of show how this step fits within like the larger process of looking at so the public is clear that this is just one item of it, and does that not necessarily supersede getting feedback from the public on the charter? Does that make sense? Because I think for people who might not know the process and know how and why we might want to review the charter, understanding where they can have a voice in that, and then how this particular step may help to inform how they're going to understand and get involved in that might be helpful.
I appreciate that, and we, we also welcome councils promoting that message too, because it's council who decides what goes on, on, on the code. The, the, the attorney is an advisor to the body to ensure it meets legal standards.
Okay, Councilmember Pompey, I don't know if you want to make a, a motion to continue discussion, but go ahead and make your point.
Yes. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, while we are undergoing this charter review process, that doesn't actually prevent council from making any changes to the charter as it stands. We can still amend the charter if we so choose at any time, no matter where we are in this review process. So even though this could take up to eighteen months, we could be making charter amendments as we so determine.
Right. Requires a resolution to read. Well, obviously voted to be voted in.
And I think that's an important point to take into consideration. At the same time, you know, the, the, the charter is a foundational part of our governance. So I, I think that we should always be very, very thoughtful, maybe even a little bit reticent about rapidly making changes. It's something we need to kind of think through. And some things need to be changed, other things really need to be thought about, and with lots of community input. So would anyone like to make a motion? We can, so that we can take questions and move ahead with this possibly?
Don to the.
Um, yeah, I can, I can make a motion. I move that we approve authorization for the city manager, manager to encumber funds and make payments for services to the city solicitor not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for the charter review. These payments will cover the costs associated with performing a thorough review of the city charter throughout the process.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Pope is seconded. Is there any additional council discussion? Shall we take comments from the public? Okay, Mr. Orleans.
Bill Orleans, Phil, I certainly think, and like in retrospect, council to have had a more weighted discussion of amending the charter in two thousand nine when it went from five to seven members. Had it done so then, maybe we would not be in the situation we are today. But nonetheless, it is council's prerogative, also the citizens' prerogative, but council's prerogative, if it wants to, to amend the charter as it chooses to. And in the past many years, both individual residents and in some cases official advisory bodies to council have recommended changes to our charter, and council has not responded by having a discussion, certainly not a vote, certainly not a vote to amend our charter. Mr. Samron suggests the timeline might be eighteen months. I'm glad to hear that Ms. Pompey suggests that council shouldn't have to wait eighteen months if it decided actually to get off its duff and amend the charter, as has been recommended to council again from many residents and some of its own advisory committees. Every one of you, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, has said at some point that you want to be transparent and accountable to your constituents, the residents of Greenbelt, the people who have elected you to office. You know, you can't be accountable when you're always looking, one, to contract out for one thing, one entity to revise the municipal code when indeed something council and staff could do on its own, or reaching on another end to the city solicitor. I don't know when he's going to find the time to, to help us on the code. He's never here for our regular meetings, as he should be, but reaching out to the city solicitor to help us come up with a proposed charter change. Council has a responsibility to be accountable to the people you say you want to be. Council can sit down in a regular meeting or a special meeting and say, we think this part of the code is wrong. We think this part of the charter should be amended. And engaged with residents to do these things. You don't have to pay others to do the job that you should be doing with our participation.
Thank you. You seem to be getting very agitated, and it's, I feel like you're kind of lecturing council. So if you could just tone it down a bit, not to cut you off or anything. I really don't want to do that. So let's take a vote. If it's, are there any additional comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion does carry. Thank you. So that's gonna bring us to the next item on the agenda, rent stabilization discussion. Councilmember Pompey requested this item be added to the agenda. So County Bill fifty-five, two thousand twenty-four has to do with rent stabilization. It's amending the temporary ordinance that, that went into place, I believe it's two years ago, and making permanent the provisions of Council Bill zero zero seven, two thousand twenty-three. So this legislation was co-sponsored by councilmembers Harrison, Fisher, Franklin, Hawkins, and Watkins, and it's scheduled to be discussed in County Council tomorrow. Now, I, I was just reading, I'm a little bit behind, but I was just reading that Councilman Franklin has resigned from the County Council, so he would no longer be a, a sponsor of the bill. And I, I know that the numbers and majorities are very, very important sometimes in these County Council discussions. So I'm not sure what the implications of that might be. But here's a summary. The primary goal of County Bill fifty-five, two thousand twenty-four is to permanently protect renters of property from excessive rent increases. The affected code sections are thirteen dash one forty-seven, thirteen dash one forty-six, thirteen dash one forty-five, and thirteen dash one forty-four, as well as thirteen dash one thirty-eight, which amends subtitle thirteen of the county code. Some of the key points, the bill aims to provide long-term stability and protection for renters by making rent stabilization measures permanent. Number two is support. The bill has the support of a majority of council, but may not, given that Councilman Franklin has resigned. Amendments, while the bill is expected to pass, some minor friendly amendments may be added before the final passage. And I'd like to put an asterisk on that. I, I think there's going to be a lot of discussion and a lot of amendments. Councilmember Pompey, would you like to speak?
Yeah, sure. I just, I, I requested that this be added to our agenda because we have more than five thousand individual rental units here in Prince George's, here in Greenbelt. So this will have significant impacts, no matter how it passes, on our residents. So I just felt like we need to, as a council, need to be aware of this legislation. We need to be talking about this legislation, forming our own opinion on it. Because as I said, it, it will have pretty large impacts here. So some of my, my biggest concerns have to do with the fact that I think that the bill lacks some important tenant protections. It doesn't have any vacancy control, which would sort of prevent people from, basically their leases not being renewed so that the, the rental could be risen, that they could raise the rent for the next renter. So I think that that's really important. You know, and I was also concerned with the fact that properties built from two thousand to now are exempted, which just seems like a large exemption forever. And I think, you know, the idea, some of the council members are proposing an amendment that it would be more of a rolling exemption. So you maybe would be exempted if you were a new property, but eventually you would be, you would have to abide by the, by the, by the bill. And then just really, there was no fee regulation, which is something that concerned me, especially seeing what was happening at Charlestown North, making sure that, you know, rental companies can't add sort of auxiliary fees or start charging for things that, that they hadn't charged before, that were in the contract, like we saw that at Charlestown North, where all of a sudden people are being charged for, for water and for electricity and things that they hadn't paid for before and that were in their contract. And we, we need to make sure that those protections are in place for people so that that doesn't happen, so that if, you know, if this bill passed and, you know, caps, caps on rental increases are implemented, that there aren't any sort of loopholes or workarounds. So those are just some of my concerns. And I know, I don't know if anyone else, I, I know this sort of came late. I didn't know if everyone had time to review it, but as I said, I think we need to do our best to prevent as many, or protect as many of our residents as we can. So.
Yeah, I applaud you for, for bringing this bill up. It is late in, in the game. This discussion is going to, it's not a game, it's really serious, but the, the discussion's going to happen tomorrow. I, I, you know, based, I talked with you a little bit this afternoon, and I was able to talk with County Councilmember Watson briefly, and didn't really get a whole lot of additional information. She said something about there's a six percent, the cap would be raised from three percent to six percent. But she was saying that she thinks that County Council will probably moderate that to four or five percent. With the exemption of units, well, there's two exemptions in there that are significant. One, the cooperative is, the co-op is exempted. And also for condominium owners, they are also exempted from the cap on increases, which would be beneficial, I guess, for owners in, in the co-op. As far as the, the, I think the rolling date for exemptions rather than the year two thousand might be a good idea. I, I know that, you know, regionally, there's a shortage of housing, and, and I think the County Council and the County Executive are trying to find ways to get builders to come in and build more affordable housing. So those, those builders who build affordable housing also build market rate as well. So perhaps there's a concern about if the requirements are too stringent, that it might be difficult to actually encourage some of the affordable housing builders to, to do what they need to do in Prince George's County. So that's just a couple of short thoughts, insights. Mr. Samron, you know, one of the reasons why we decided to, to work with a contractor to help us with legislation was to provide update, heads up when things are coming. So I, I know, I think Mr. Carrington provided a brief summary. In the committee as a whole is meeting tomorrow. Did Mr., and I saw, there's a document, it was in the packet, or it was a link from the packet. So Mr. Carrington did weigh in with some information?
He, he submitted a memo which we shared with council, and it was updated in the packet, a summary of the, of the bill, and that's what the majority of the, of the agenda comments are. He was not asked for a recommendation, so there wasn't a recommendation provided.
Wouldn't expect a recommendation, but to have the information in a timely fashion. We, you know, I guess County Council's going on recess pretty soon. So we really do need to be made aware of bills that are coming up that have a substantial impact.
Very agree.
Yeah. Mayor Portem?
Yeah, and I guess I, I have not had a chance to look at what, what just got sent not long before the meeting that, that Councilmember Oriada, but it did, I think, the, the longer discussion that was in there that I at least, that was ahead of time. So it sounds like they may be changing it to be more like the Montgomery County one that has the rolling date rather than the fixed date, which that did seem a little bit odd. Having a fixed date seems, seems a little bit strange to me. So I'm glad that they, they were fixing that. And I want to, I think it was, the way it's listed is, I think CPI plus three or six percent, the lesser of. So it sounds like from what Councilmember Watson told you, that might change?
Yes.
Okay. And it was CPIU, which I know there's different, Consumer Price Index. I don't remember which one is you.
When are they meeting?
Tomorrow.
And, and these are, of course, just suggested amendments. So.
Right, they may not.
So it's hard to know if they'll be received as friendly amendments or not. And as, as the mayor has also said, it's hard to really know, you know, with, with Councilmember Franklin's recent resignation, it, passage might not be as assured as it was even a week ago. So I don't, I don't really have a feeling, a feel on that.
We should keep an eye on it, though, and, and be, be updated if there's any changes.
Yeah, I would really like to know, as this is being debated tomorrow, how, how things are coming.
How they're gonna, yeah, how they're gonna move forward.
If you could actually tune in and watch. I don't know if you can make comment. I don't think that you can make comments. You might be able to go down and, but this, this is really, you know, I think there are gonna be a lot of changes. It would have been nice to have more time because we could have, you know, weighed in in a more substantial way. But, you know, as, as, as Councilmember Pompey has pointed out, this, this is very, very important. It's a big deal. And we really need an appropriate amount of time to, to be thoughtful in, in the way that we react.
I'll ask Mr. Carrington to attend tomorrow's meeting and report back.
And if you could, I, because I think what I noticed about his summary is that it was kind of generic. It'd be, it'd be much more helpful if it, it focused a little bit more on implications for Greenbelt. Because I think, I mean, staff put together the list of the years of the, the apartment complexes. So basically, it would apply except for GHI because co-ops are exempted. And there may be some other things, some other condominiums, but in terms of the multifamily houses, it would, it would, as written now, would affect everything except like Motiva and Verdi in Greenbelt. But it's just some of those, some things that are not just the same thing that was in the summary that, that was already produced by, I think, I assume county staff would be. A little bit more the implications for Greenbelt is, I guess, what I'm asking for.
Yeah, and, and I guess I also just felt like the details here didn't really, like, all of the issues that I brought up, none of those were here in Mr. Carrington's summary, you know? Like, it was sort of all like, these are all the great things this bill is gonna do, but, which is true. These are positive things, but there are also some things that are not so great for tenants. And, you know, I, I would appreciate it. I would have appreciated something a little more balanced, I guess.
A step in the right direction. Also, you know, it's important to just be aware of what, what these property owners, the apartment owners are, in Greenbelt are thinking. Not that we would necessarily agree or disagree with them. It's just important to, to know where they stand so that we can either agree or disagree with them. Yeah, Ms. Pope.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. Has anyone reached out to the property owners themselves? So we can maybe hear, you know, that side as well. I mean, I understand that, you know, I, I agree there should be some rent control. There has to be some rent control because we have, obviously landlords out there. They are abusing the system and they're just, you know, raising their rent outrageously and doing whatever they want to do, and that's just not right. We can't, we can't have that. But, so I'm just wondering if that, that has been done. Do, do the property owners know? Does Franklin Park know? Maybe, you know, have he reached out?
Not us directly, because it wouldn't fall under our jurisdiction. I would hope that.
Sure they know.
That county. Now, I, I know that Franklin Park has a representative that advocates on the, for their interest at the county and state level. So I know that that, I'm sure that that's going on. But I, I don't know the details of any outreach that has been done to particular property owners.
Gosh, and I really wish that we would have a little bit more, more information and more, you know. and more, you know, just something more substantial. And now it's very, we don't even know what's gonna happen now with one council member resigning, so.
Ms. Roberts? I'm sorry, Ms. Roberts.
Isn't Mr. Carrington working for the county as well? That's what he told us at the dinner there a few months ago. So how can we expect to get our issues discussed when he's working for the county? That's a, that's a huge conflict of interest. That's not, we shouldn't be employing someone that's also working for, you know, the county, which has different ideas about stuff. So you're wondering why our issues are not in his discussions?
I don't think county council is at all in one position or one mind about this. It's pretty clear that they're not. Ms. Poppy?
Just slightly off topic, and my apologies, but I was wondering if it would be possible for, you know, Mr. Carrington to do regular updates with the council, like a weekly or a bi-weekly, maybe even phone call that council could call into if they wanted to or they had time to?
We need to relieve him of his duties. Not, we should not be hiring Mr. Carrington. Because he's not, he's not on our side. Haven't you figured that out?
So that would just be my request, if we could be a little more interactive with him. Because it would have been great if we could have asked him questions directly about this bill when it came up. So if we had some kind of standing meeting, even if it's not, you know, maybe some weeks there's nothing, but some weeks there are things. And we want to have a conversation with them, I don't know.
Or we would be more affected by than others. So of course, I think we're more interested in exactly what, how is this affecting us? And I think that, that piece for me has been missing a little bit.
Mr. Carrington has offered to attend council meetings and provide a regular update, so we, it's just a matter of us scheduling. Mr. Carrington, so we can schedule him for the July meeting. He's also requested a retreat with council to do legislative planning. What are the priorities to focus on ahead of the November pre-filing deadlines with the, with the county? What kind of work you want to see from him with the, sorry, the pre-filing with the state legislature? The, and what kind of work you want him focusing on with the county? So it's made those options available, we just need to schedule those. So I'll schedule him for the July meeting, so we get an update.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Orleans?
There's a little bit of a disconnect. While I was pleased to see it on the table, and I inquired who put this on the agenda, I was pleased to hear Ms. Poppy put it on the agenda tonight. Once I read the agenda package, it refers to CB 55. What's on the table is either an earlier or the most recent Crystal Oriata bill. Council, there's one thing, action thing, council could do tonight. That's to write a letter to Ingrid Watson and also Calvin Hawkins, if not the others, at least those two, no longer to Bell Franklin, asking them to support what council was, the direction council was moving in until two weeks ago. Last year, Councilmember Oriata, supported by several members of the council, put forward a bill to, for emergency legislation, to expire in April of this year. Prior to April of this year, because there was lack of unified, it was thought there would be a lack of unified action to continue or expand or make permanent that bill, a six-month extension was offered by council and supported by all members of council. Councilmember Oriata was blindsided two weeks ago when this group of five county council members offered CB 55, effectively gutting the direction that the permanent legislation that was begun last year would have gone in. Heaven forbid that Prince George's County might be slightly more progressive in representing tenants' interests than Montgomery County. And the real estate industry, the developers in Prince George's County, using that as, an instrument convinced, it didn't require much convincing, since a majority of county council is pro-developer anyway, but convinced a majority of council that they should not wait the six months extension from April till October. They should move quickly and demonstrably, offer a bill that's demonstrably weaker than it would have been when, if discussed in October. What I'd like to think council should do tonight is act on the interest of Greenbelt's renters, but also renters everywhere in the county, and suggest to Ms. Watson and Mr. Hawkins that they should not move on this bill, CB 55, tomorrow, even with, even if it's successfully amended. And as it stands now, I don't see the, those amendments being successful brought by Ms. Oriata and the other three members of her side. Ms. Watson and Mr. Hawkins should be asked not to proceed tomorrow with CB 55 and allow council and staff and the public to weigh in for the next four months, a permanent bill to replace the temporary bill that was passed in 2023. I ask council to do that tonight.
Thank you, is there anyone online, any other public comment?
Comments online, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, any motions? There's a hand raised. There's a hand raised, oh, Mr. Hartman, please.
Oh, not online, I was looking online.
Online, okay.
Is someone online too? I was looking in the Q and A, oh, you're right.
Michael Hartman, to Court Runway. I know that CASA has come out with important talking points, and I think that there's enough question about this bill that it might be a good idea to ask that it not be decided tomorrow. And I think, and I agree that that might be the thing that, since the council here does not have all the information that it might need in order to support one view or the other, because it has come up so quickly. I think that rushing to pass a bill is not a good idea and that the suggestion that, that council members Watson and Franklin be asked to not vote tomorrow is to give it more time, to let CASA present its views and other organizations present their views. Because I think that they're, they bring up a lot of important issues. And I think it would not, be better not to rush into this, but to take the time and make sure it's done right, rather than rushing into something that, that we could then look at, and the council here can look at those issues and be much more, have a much more informed suggestion and recommendations to our council member and our council member at large. So I think it's a good idea.
Well, thank you, thank you. I don't know if rushing, I know there was a task force on this issue that was established back in February. And one of the participants was Mr. Lyman from CASA. So I don't really know to what extent the input from the working group was incorporated, I don't know.
I don't know.
I mean, Ms., Councilmember Oriata was the council liaison to that working group, and she's obviously proposing amendments to it, so I wonder as well.
Well, and it looks like it was just presented, according to the legislative history, on June 4th, so that's not, that's less than two weeks ago. That's very quick.
Well, is that to the committee or to the?
It says.
So it comes to the process, it's researched and?
This says the.
And looking at the information, I think Mr. Hamlin, Josh Hamlin, actually drafted this legislation.
What it says is, on 6/4, the acting body, county council, presented and referred it to the committee of the whole. This council bill was presented by council members Ivy Harrison, Fisher Franklin, Hawkins and Watson, and referred to the committee of the whole. And that was on June 4th, according to the documentation that's in the packet. So that's not very long ago.
Okay, so, but it went through committee first, and then it was moved to the bodies as a whole.
I agree with Mr. Hartman, though, on this. I think we should wait until we have all the information, and then we'll go ahead and do something. There's too many changes coming up, I, I just don't.
We do have one, Louis Weisman has her hand raised.
Okay, okay, Ms. Weisman, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Hey, welcome, how are you today?
I was not gonna speak because I've been under the weather today, but I will hope that the council, there's a lot of back history on how the bill ended up the way it is. But I would hope that the balance that the council needs to bring to the discussion is to talk to the Prince George's County Housing Justice Coalition, of which CASA is a member, along with tenant organizations, along with locals of unions, as well as the NAACP. And that we have actually been working with Councilmember Oriata throughout the whole process in supporting her. But I understand, I hear you all saying, which, you know, makes sense to ask for a delay if you're only talking to Hawkins and Watson. But I would urge you all to ask for a meeting or ask for a convening of the coalition leadership. Because what's missing from the bill is, it is a skewed version of what secure, of what rent stabilization is, but there are not enough tenant protections in the bill as it was written. And that's why the bill, the amendments are being presented tomorrow by Oriata, Burris and Blaguey. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Well, I don't know that we have time to write a letter, but, but I would move that we delegate council members to request from Councilmember Watson and Hawkins that they delay action on this bill, that we would like to have more time to discuss it. And do it, I don't think we have time to write a letter, but we can, we can decide afterwards who calls whom. But I would, I would, I would move that.
Okay, is there a second?
I would second that, yes.
Okay, discussion? I don't know, we could send an email, I don't know. If they're going into session, I don't know what time the meeting starts.
Or an email, but communicate to them. I just don't think we have time for a formal letter. So communicate via some means, informally via email or via phone call, depending on, I can't, I don't think this says what time the meeting is.
But I would support that, email would be fine, too, I think.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Let's draft an email, ask for more time. We can, we can all attach our names to the email.
Ms. Weisman just commented the meeting should be at around 12:00 or 12:30. So if we get something in in the morning, hopefully, we'll see it.
Sounds good. And also, I was, when we were talking, I was a little surprised that, well, it's summer and, you know, our sister municipalities, there are a lot of things going on. But, you know, this is, you would expect that PG CMA would weigh in on this.
It would. Disappointed to see that that did not happen.
Okay. Hey, well, that's gonna take us to council activities, is that where that takes us? Yeah, council activities. Mayor Protem?
Yep, I can pull this up.
Ton of things going on, you know, what a, what a fabulous weekend it was in Greenbelt. So many things. The Pride Festival and Parade.
It was great. Weather was good, it was fun.
Yeah, the weather was fantastic, there was an awards ceremony, the Prince George's County lynching project. Had an essay contest, awards program in the community center. It was really interesting hearing some of the young people just talking about projects that they worked on. Saturday, artful afternoon. And Ms. Poppy, you were, you were drawing pictures, what did you draw?
I was, I, I made an, it was a watercolor of our, our village green here. Or my approximation of it.
I saw a picture, you should get that framed and see, you know, put it up on eBay or something.
You know, I'm sure people look at it and they're like, did a six-year-old paint that? Like, who's drawing this? But it was actually really nice, I was there. Councilmembers McKinnney and Pope were there, too. And it was like, there was banjo music, we were painting, like, it was, it was pretty great, yeah.
Well, and that was the one on the 2nd, I believe. And then they did the same event again on the 9th at Spring Hill Lake. And I think, yeah, I didn't, I didn't make it in time to actually do any watercolors, but I stopped by to see what other people were doing for the one on the 9th.
And, you know, last week, a lot of promotion ceremonies. There was a promotion ceremony over at Spring Hill Lake Elementary School.
Yes, yes, we were there.
There's a bunch of parents, how many people were in, there was a lot of people there.
Speech, but Emmett is so eloquent, he just pulls it out of his sleeve, you know? But it was nice, there were a lot of people there, it was great.
And the middle school had a promotion ceremony over in Roosevelt High School. The bleachers were filled up, and Senator Washington was there, and he spoke.
So. Niesel's son was in fact promoted.
Somehow, he graduated from middle school.
And a couple of days before that. There was an international day over at the middle school and all sorts of cultural, there's great food and just people, people from all over the world. You know, we live in such an incredibly diverse community, it's fantastic. The African Women's Cancer Association had a health fair last week, and McKinnney and Poppy were both there.
I stopped by, I was there right at the end. Yeah, I had no idea there were so many offices down behind there.
Quite a few. And of course, the health department's gonna have their building right next door there, so.
Yeah, just down the street, yeah.
There's also the job fair that day, and I stopped by there, and the businesses that, who were there were really pleased. They were all like thankful that we had hosted it. They had all met with a lot of people, and they were just really glad that we were doing that and anxious for us to do it again, so that was nice feedback to get.
Yeah, it was nice, and just kind of looking around, there were people, you know, in suits and ties, some young, recent graduates there looking for jobs, so. Yeah, Ms. McKinnney?
I'd say if we could actually do a follow-up with the African Women's Health Committee, that fair was wonderful, and the amount of different organizations that came that offer services in the community, especially to women of color, is important. So there were so, I was picking up all this information that we need to be able to share with the community, whether they did screenings on site. But then there's also just all of these wonderful organizations that are out there for our community members. So if there's a way that we can get that information from them to be able to put it out to our community, since we have additional channels, that would be great. So just maybe a follow-up to that organizer would be wonderful.
And it would be, maybe, I wonder if we could partner with them next time we're doing health screenings? Because they did get a lot of, they did have a lot of people there. And I know that, you know, we've done the, like, the Kaiser bus at Beltway Plaza, but I wonder if there's a way to coordinate and sort of magnify our efforts?
We should definitely do that, I mean, it's a good organization. We could invite them to a council meeting. They came three years ago and kind of presented some information, so.
No, you've been a big advocate on, and you've received an award at that time for them. But I think just being able to really highlight and get that information out there is even more important, so.
Hey, it's a quarter after 10:00, and we have to, we've got some business to discuss, and we need to go into an executive session, I think, to talk about it. So Mayor Protem?
Yeah. Okay, so I move that council go into closed session in accordance with Section 3-305B 1, 7, and, is it 7? 1, 7, and 10 of the general provisions article of the, of the annotated code of the Public General Laws of Maryland. One, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Two, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. And three, to discuss public safety if the public body determines that public discussion would constitute a risk to the public or to public security, including, one, the deployment of fire and, and fire and police services and staff, and two, the development and implementation of emergency plans. The purpose of this meeting is, one, to address personnel matters over which this public body has jurisdiction, and two, to consult with staff about pending or potential litigation. And three, to. And three, to, uh, discuss the deployment of fire staff. Note that council will not return to open session following this closed session. In addition to council, uh, City Manager Samron will be, uh, in attendance.
Well, thank you, we'll need a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Uh, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKinney?
Yes.
Ms. Poppy?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, it's, uh, ten twenty right now. And let's go ahead and shut.